Can we do a uh? Well, please. No calls. Anderson. Our cocky. Yeah. Burgess. Lord. Here. I screen. Bitch. Here. Land. Here. Here. You remember. Yeah. He's yourself.
Uh, here.
Oh, he's online. Online. Uh, sweetie world. Thank you.
Here. Yes.
What cable?
With Phil's online here.
Thank you. And what? Here. All right, great. Uh, before we start, I just want to make a note that we have a lot of ground to cover tonight. So, um, we're gonna try and limit, uh, as much as possible, um, your guys' reports for, for, um, elective officials along with, um, the monthly reports that are going to be put out. So please breathe brief because we have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine items on the agenda. So, all right, uh, so with that, let's go ahead and start. Well, Lulu Fire Department. Hey, nothing heard. Forty-one's going twice, nothing heard, okay. HPD.
Hi, um, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go, sir.
Lieutenant, yeah, Lieutenant Iwasaki, Honolulu Police Department, Pro City District. Um, so I'll read the stats, uh, for motor vehicle deaths. Um, this is comparison July twenty twenty-four to August twenty twenty-four. There was three, and in August, there was ten motor vehicle deaths for burglaries. July had six, we had one in August twenty twenty-four. For deaths, thirty-four in July compared to twenty-seven in August. And car break-ins was eight in July and ten in August. And just a safety tip of the month for HPD, whenever you get into a vehicle, make sure to use your seat belts, make sure your children are buckled in as well. And that's all I have, and I'm open to questions.
Is there any questions for HPD?
Sorry. Is there anything on that pedestrian accident on the front of Ia Heights in Wanalua? Including speeding with WI? And driving.
That was Ia Heights and Wanalua.
Yes.
Yeah, um, I probably wasn't, do you know what time it was it happened? I can't get back to you on that. Um, I don't have the information right now.
It was on paper two Sundays ago. So I think it was the night. Saturday night, two weeks ago.
Saturday night. Yeah, I would have to follow up on that. Um, but right now, uh, what we're doing at the Pro City Station, um, our initiative right now is speeding. So, um, we're sending out officers like the Pro City Neighborhood Board also, um, did cited a lot of locations that there's speeding problems right now. So we're sending officers daily to those hotspots. Uh, it's mostly schools like Lehu Elementary, um, up, uh, Manana, um, and, uh, Pro City High School Highlands, know that. So, uh, that's our initiative now is for, cause, uh, uh, I know a child got, uh, got banged on, uh, in front of Lehu Elementary as well. So that's what, um, our initiative is for this month right now we're focusing on. So if there's any hotspots that you guys have, then I'd like to hear it as well. So we can add it to my list here.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Danny?
Well, um, question if you have any statistics related to calls tied to suicide or can bring suicide for our area?
Um, usually, uh, we don't, um, really release that information. However, um, I can tell you that, um, as, as far as the nights I've worked, um, I haven't heard too much of those calls. Um, right now, we are recently. Yeah.
Thank you.
Which is a good thing, yeah.
Okay. Right, any other board members? Okay, before we move on to the community, um, I do want to, so I have it on the agenda actually, but I think you guys are already addressing it, which is homeless and safety concerns on Pono Hana Loop and Pono Hana Place. Um, so there was like, uh, some, uh, pan, I think, and residents reporting, uh, drugs being sold out of that along with some homeless around that area too. Um, then literally across, um, I think it's Monalua Road, something like that, right there near Newtown. Yeah, um, right across the road from that is a, like a vacant lot. And there's a homeless individual living in that vacant lot, uh, right next to the school. Um, and there's drugs being sold there too. Um, and so the neighbors are reporting about, you know, all the suspicious activity and things like that. Um, I have the actual address, hold on, let me.
Is that he called shooting?
Yeah. Yeah. Uh. Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll get it to you later. Um, I don't want to hold up because we got such a huge agenda for today. But, um, it is, oh, nine eight two seven five, Akia, see how you say it? Take a, take a street. I know this is probably wrong. So, so that it could be, you know, you know, a little touchy there, but, but, you know, it's right next to a school.
Okay. You know what, I'm gonna address that now. So the Pono Hana Loop and Place, that was, um, also homeless in that area, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, we'll address that right now. So, uh, right after this meeting, I'll call my sergeants and we'll send officers over there right now.
Okay.
On both of these, yeah, both of these, take Kaha as well.
All right, okay, great, thank you. And I do want to give a shout out for Senator Alfonso for helping out with that as well too. So, thank you. Um, okay, uh, community members, any, any reports or anything for HPD? Online and personal?
Sir. You know, the dog situation with Pro Harbor Park, we, we have, I take my daughter walking over there. I know you guys, the Humane Society caught dogs in Waipahu area, but I like to take my child walking over there and with my, with myself, I'm okay, but it's a concern with the dogs, stray dogs and my daughter. So if that is being addressed, because I know it's just on Waipahu side, and that whole stretch is runs from Waipahu all the way till the stadium and so forth.
Right, right, that's the bike path, yeah, you're talking about?
Right.
Yeah, well, yeah, we've been addressing that a lot. Um, we have ATB, uh, patrols over there as well, but I'll, I'll, I'll look into this dog complaint. I know somebody just got bitten in that area too. There's a wild dog complaint, so we had to call the Humane Society in the middle of the night. So I'll, I'll look into this as well and I'll follow up with you on the next meeting. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, nothing heard. Thank you, sir, and look forward to, uh, the reports next month.
Thank you.
Hey, water supply, Tracy.
If you need chair.
Good evening.
I'm the neighborhood board and members of the community. Tracy, we're looking for water supply. I will make this fast. Um, so in August, uh, since we didn't meet, there was one being reported in this neighborhood board district for July, and that was on Pono Hana Loop, and we have the information in the report. Um, I do want to call your attention to this Oahu household questionnaire we passed out, little flyers for you folks. Um, we're bringing water supplies, participating in a water access and affordability survey that's taking place in communities across the country. And we want to encourage the public to fill out this questionnaire, um, through, and actually it's through the end of the month. Um, we extended it. It should take approximately five to ten minutes to complete. Uh, we feel that this is really important for people to compete because your input will assist the water supply to implement programs like financial assistance and programs that will help vulnerable residents, including our group now. And all responses are confidential. So if you just go to the QR code and you, uh, it'll take you directly to the, uh, the survey. The second thing we wanted to promote tonight is our Imagine a Day Without Water. This is going to be Saturday, September twenty-eighth, from ten to two, ten AM to two PM at the Kapolei Regional Park. And, um, I won't go into detail, but this is the flyer, and then it lists all of the activities that we have. Plus, there's going to be, uh, one of them for purchase. And great thing about this activity is that admission is free for all agents paid. And we have our website and blog. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. Uh, and just for admin note, uh, when we get down to board business, Tracy will not be doing the brief. So, uh, there will be somebody else who will do.
Yes, it is our deputy manager.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. All right. Moving on, Stadium Authority, Chris and Samantha.
Aloha Chair Wood, members of the board and members of the community, welcome back from your recess in August. We're just wanting to report that, as we said in July, unfortunately, one of our listed offers, Waiala Development Partners, did withdraw from the procurement process. But as you may have heard in the views and in our newsletter, the remaining party listed offer, Aloha Halava District Partners, did submit their proposal in time for the July thirty-first deadline. So we are very, very busy reviewing and evaluating what they submitted to make sure it meets all of the request for proposal requirements and make sure that we're bringing value to the state. And we are still on time, hopefully, to be able to determine whether or not they will continue as the preferred offer by the end of this month. If they do continue, we will go into the nine months due diligence and discussion phase to make sure that we have all the Ts crossed and all the Is dotted before we sign off on our contract. And with that, we would still remain on time for our two thousand twenty-eight UH football season opening. So that's our great news, and I'll go ahead and pass on to Sam before we open to questions.
All right, good evening, everyone, thank you. Um, so just quick updates, we just, um, had our Megabone this past Saturday. We had a great crowd. Um, we were anticipating twenty-five thousand, we most likely did not hit that. Um, but it was a good practice for us. Uh, we brought in fifty-plus staff, um, so we did not have any incidents that, um, we heard of. The traffic was pretty smooth in and out, so we were really happy with that. Um, we did work with DTS, and I can report that we partnered with Leeward Community College, and they actually had forty-one cars that parked there to jump on the rail. And, um, that evening, we had almost four thousand riders, um, which is pretty good for the skyline. Normally, they see about two thousand for the entire weekend. So it was a really good turnout for the Megabone. Um, upcoming events, we do have for the month of September, twenty-ninth, we'll be doing pickleball as part of our Swap Meet forty-fifth anniversary. Um, we have a night market and car show on October fifth. And then we just announced, um, another concert on November sixteenth, Little Wayne, which is also with TMR Events. Um, so we'll be following the same footprint for him as well. And, um, just to report, because we did have questions, we will not be having our Habilitat Halloween drive-through this year. They've decided, um, to hold off, and then we'll relook at it for next year. And that's it, we're open to questions.
Okay, board members, any questions for Stadium? Uh, I, you know, I live right across the street from the stadium, so, uh, Megabone was great. Um, one of the reasons why you probably didn't see a huge amount of participation is because, uh, last year it was just so crowded, I guess. And a lot of folks just don't want to deal with that, this, this go-around. But your layout this year really accommodated for an influx of twenty-five thousand people. And, uh, so it, it, it was great. I mean, your layout was completely different. So I think hopefully the work gets around, next year will be a little different scenario, so, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, um, uh, for Chris, real quick, when are you going to be able to notify the public about the most recent, or the only proposal that you got?
Like, so we're targeting, we're targeting notifying the HDP by the end of September, and then we would come out with an immediately, immediate press release, usually within one or two days of notification. So crossing our fingers like, yeah.
Okay.
At, at, end of September, early October.
Looking forward to that, I'd like to see what their proposal looks. All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Right? Right, uh, community members, any questions for Stadium Authority? Nobody online? Okay, all right, thank you both, really appreciate the. Okay, uh, O-triple-C.
All right. Good evening, Chair Wood, members of the board, members of the community. I am Bettina Maynard, and I am giving you a three-minute update on, um, your favorite project, clearly. Um, here is, oh, why doesn't this work? Hold on, there we go. Um, here's a list of some of our current activities on this project. Uh, the one that we would like to highlight tonight is our attendance at the American Correctional Association, uh, ACA, or short, in Nashville, which is part of the project industry sounding. It was at this conference here, um, where we introduced the project to the industry and, um, the correctional market. Uh, we were told that this was one of the most well-attended conferences in ACA's hundred-and-fifty-four-year history, uh, with over four thousand attendees from all around the world. Um, well, all, mostly the US, but, uh, some international attendees. Um, our team was represented by members, um, of the client, the user, and the design team. And this diverse, uh, group represented the project at the booth, which you see here, um, as well as, um, in the, in the rest of the conference. Our, uh, one of our goals of this trip was to get early feedback about how to package the project for the RFP, which is supposed to come out in twenty twenty-five. Um, as part of preparing the booths, we created a new branding identity for the project, which is called the New Oahu Jail, um, as we go forward. A landing, uh, webpage was established as part of the effort, and I will type the address, uh, into the comments, um, after this presentation, uh, here. Um, next one is. There we go. The, while we were in Nashville for the conference, we had the opportunity to tour the Davidson County Jail and the Behavioral Care Center, which is part of the jail. Um, both were constructed in twenty-twenty, in twenty nineteen, so, uh, quite recent. Um, three of our consultants on this team, WSP, HOK, and AHL, hosted a networking event where, uh, we met with potential bidders and interested parties to discuss our intentions with this project. This, it, this was highly successful as, uh, we learned that some people, uh, flew in, um, from other parts of the US just to attend this event here. Um, as a team, we have developed a sequence, um, of follow-up, I, uh, follow-up items coming out of the conference. We will return to the January conference of the ACA, um, early next year. And we are planning to present as well as exhibit, um, at that conference. Finally, a reminder of, of our timeline and where we currently are. And that concludes my three minutes. Are there any questions?
Okay, more questions for Lawrence?
I have a question on the passport meeting about testing the air quality. It's, uh, jail is going to be in the vicinity of the quarry. I just Googled, uh, as far as the dust coming off of the quarry. And apparently there are some potential health effects. Did anybody do any testing for the air quality in that area?
You know, I apologize, I asked this question at our last meeting, I wrote it down. I started digging, and I don't have the answer, um, here today. I will, um, have it at the next meeting, I promise. I am not aware of any, um, right now.
So when we went to the quarry, did the tour of the quarry, they do air tests?
Yeah. They, I think that is.
They do suppression efforts, like if you walk or you start, and, uh, potential blow-off of.
Yes.
They don't recommend building anything within the vicinity if it's a twenty-four-seven minute facility. Because that does cause it's on a lung issue, or new issues over time. So it's not going to show up like early, what, five years, all ten years, all one hundred, Christmas month starting getting sick.
Because of that. Can you send me some of that information? Sure, I can pass it on to the board and, yeah, and, uh, pass it on to the team as well.
I don't think they have any, uh, jails next to quarries. Back in the forty-fifty, you had jail, the prisons weren't, the war.
You should fix those in the small ones, right?
I don't have anything, but I have anything about the war.
And I do know we asked that question when we did the tour, remember, Dave?
Yeah.
Yeah, we asked that question about the dust, right? And what did they do and how did they monitor it? And they have state, I think it's state officials, I think, now? Who was on that tour with us? Was you, me? Danny, you weren't there, right? Yeah, I know. Jenny? No. So anyways, regardless, but, yeah, um, uh, Councilmember Cordero is there. Um, but, um, yeah, they, they do some suppression, dust, they do not some, they, they actively do dust suppression.
Were they doing air quality testing?
Yeah, they were doing air quality testing too, same time. Cause, um, you know, I lived downwind of it, right, as well? So that was one of the reasons why I asked, so. But send me that info so we can start digging into it. Sure. The call, thanks. Okay, uh, anybody, any other board members? Okay, uh, Warren, I'm gonna go to you real quick, are you?
Okay. I just wanted to say, uh, I was on the ACA trip to Nashville, it was very well attended. We had not only a lot of, uh, national and even international interest, we even had some local interest, which is good for me. Um, the whole idea behind this is to put that out there so that we can get the most bang for our buck. Um, and we are looking, actively looking for, uh, designs that will meet our needs rather than repeat mistakes we've made in the past. We want to look at what we can do in the future to make this a, a good, safe, healthy place to live. All of it for the next fifteen years.
All right, appreciate that, thank you. Um, when we get, we get further into the board business later on, when we get to O-triple-C presentation, uh, Danny, uh, May, myself, and Francie went and did a tour of O-triple-C, so we're gonna talk a little bit about what you saw. It's pretty eye-opening. And I highly recommend anybody on this board, if you haven't done it, you should do it. Okay? So, um, go ahead, Lawrence.
Quick question, how much does it cost to follow one prisoner for one year?
Um, you know, I can give you, uh, the official figures is it's about a hundred thousand per inmate. Um, you know, that, that can vary depending on what their needs are. Every inmate has different needs, but you're looking at about a hundred thousand.
Cause when you do the tour, there's like certain areas of jail, there are like high-risk individuals, suicidal watch. Uh, they require a whole lot more attention, a lot more, there's people in the infirmary area, so there's nurses and doctors and things like that. They require a whole lot more than a person that's in the annex part where it's like zero to ninety days, right? The way that sentencing, so it's, it can, it varies, definitely varies. Yeah. Highly recommend, Lawrence. Warren sets it up again, you go. Sure, you'd be amazed. I'm not kidding.
Hope I don't know a lot of people there.
Well, yeah, no, buddy. It was funny because I was like, I was like, you know, they should bring high school seniors through here. You know, and then they're like, oh, well, they'll see their uncles or something. They're like, oh, come, hey. I was like, oh, okay, okay, maybe, okay.
We're actually in the process, um, and I, and I'm not going to give you exact dates because I don't want, we don't put it out exactly, but they, but before Christmas time, they will be all over there, and that will relieve. So just to give you a heads up, we have about, today I looked at my sentence, or my, uh, my numbers, and our rate right there, we were at eleven hundred and like fifteen, I think.
Is that about right?
Yeah. Yeah, eleven hundred and fifteen people, we only have nine hundred beds. So the women going, we have about a hundred and twenty of those, but it's still not going to relieve all of our crowds. It's gonna make it a little nicer, because as you guys saw, we've got people sleeping in places I don't like having people sleep.
Right, like in, in the annexes, right? It's what, fifty cots per, and it's all open bay, it has three floors.
Yeah, and we have, we have sometimes cells that are designed for two people, and we have three and four people.
Exactly.
And it's simply because when you're at jail, you don't have options. They bring them to you, the courts say they will go there, we have to do something with them. And when we build the new jail, we have to take all of that into account and into mind. And that's just, that's just the reality of what we do. I mean, I wish it worked that way, but it is, so.
Yeah, we'll get into that, I'm sure, here in a little bit. Um, okay, uh, any questions from the community for O-triple-C?
Is the site a done deal, like it's definitely going to be built there? Or, uh, is it open to options of other places?
My understanding is this has already been approved by the governor's office. Now, keep in mind, I, I'm a, I'm a small fish, okay? I'm a little fish, I don't, that's outside of my scope. But what I've been told is the site has been selected and approved, that's what it's.
So it's not a big deal that gets people, or it's the neighborhood, it's the neighborhood of both.
Yeah, my, my understanding.
I think, well, what we talked about, okay, because I, I'm keen on this one, um, because there's a lot of board members that have a lot of concerns too, is, um, is about the services that are actually being provided. The jail itself is not necessarily a big deal, there's already a prison back, right? And so, so the jail itself is not necessarily a big deal. It's where you have like, um, halfway houses and things like that, because in the jail, they're not going anywhere, they're in the jail. Um, but with halfway houses and other services that allow them to exit the jail, that's where you kind of run into the issues and the concerns from the, from the neighbors, you know.
Well, it's not so much that, my concern is, you know, when they're exiting, over at O-triple-C, you can either right there, they have a bus stop. No problem. But to, to go to where you're proposing, the bus stop is a little far away.
Yeah, we talked about that too, yeah.
And the fact that these population people, you know, they're very transit, they're gonna roam around in our, in our industrial areas, and they're gonna cause problems in there that, you know, we don't have. But building the jail where they're proposing, we're by the parks, there are some, um, things over houses in our neighborhood already that are helping, um, women to, uh, recover and to have the jail for them then to be close by will cause probably, will probably bring problems to these people or how we best in our neighborhoods. You know, and I'm just gonna distract and cause problems for those who are trying to recover.
So one of the things that we talked about was transporting individuals to and from the jail, okay? Uh, and not just letting them, like, let loose in Halawa.
Jail, I'm talking about when they're released.
But that's what, that's what I'm talking about too.
Okay, you, you can't release, the process, release them right now. We can, O-triple-C give them a bus pass, right off the street, get on the bus.
Ma'am, 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 that's what we're talking about though. We're talking about not letting them just walk out in Halawa. They would actually be transported somewhere else to like a, you know, a transition center, I think, is what we were talking about, that wouldn't be located in Halawa, it'd be somewhere else. They'd be transported there, and that's where they get that transition services to go out and start reintegrating into the community.
The courts can tell them, hey, this guy is released, release him right now, they gotta release.
And they will, and they will literally take him in a car, ma'am, they will literally take him in a car and move him somewhere else.
What that is, we have staff issues right now. They, we have staff issues, and the reason, I know, I do work for correctional facility. I came for O-triple-C. I don't know if you remember me, but I used to work there. But I do work at a correctional facility, I work at the women's. So yes, I'm getting the, the women in ours coming out to ours in the jail, and, um, but like I said, the concern for us, for, as a neighbor, I live in this neighborhood, I live down the hill, I live up the hill from where you guys are proposing this jail. And I drive through there every day to go home. So I, I, you know, having that option there, I'm concerned that, that, there's not room to explain this. When you say released, you release them, you let them go, there's no time for transport if they're.
So that's, this, this jail was located at the animal quarantine.
Yeah, I remember that.
You live back up in there?
I live up the hill.
Oh, okay, so you have H-three in between you and that, okay.
Yeah, I gotta kind of pass that area, so that I'm, I'm kind of, if I wanna kind of go home, I kind of go through the, not to the industrial, but like, you know, just the front area again.
Okay, sure.
So they're in there, but it's still, you know, everywhere I live.
But your main concern is about what, what happens when they leave the jail, right?
Leave the jail from just being released by the courts, and there's no staff to take them to this sup- supposing transition house that they're gonna go. I work at O-triple-C, and they just, okay, you out, here's your bus pass, go.
Yeah.
What happens?
Well, Warren, can, we addressed that, because we're really talking about it right now.
Right now, the reason that that happens, because O-triple-C is in the central area.
Yeah, we're right next to it.
Where they are being stationed now, providing with the changes that this new facility is gonna be at, the changes have to be made when that happens. She makes a good point, that is, uh, very upsetting, we had the same situation over at Waiala. And what our staff had to do was actually drive them out of Waiala and take them to a transition. And what our staff had to do was actually drive them out of Y R and take them to a transition station. So that was happening at Y R. So it is possible, yes, we have different staff shortages, but just like everything else, some places just gonna have to be depleted in order to make sure or ensure those positions are being done now that the jail is gonna be located in a different area. That, what she's saying is true because of the fact that they can go right outside and the bus station is right out, so that would happen. But in this new era of where now we're building the new jail, the transitions will be made in order to ensure, because for their safety, do they walk out? You look at that area, it's not very safe at all either. So I don't think, even though the courts say they're gonna be released, yes, but as a public safety worker, I believe we're gonna do what we need to get them to a transition station in order to make that move. So it's, it's all in the works right now, this is just the very beginning stage. And these conversations are gonna happen at that time.
But like, like when we did the tour, that was one of the things I brought up, right? And, and I think that as long as we just keep it on the radar and we address it, it's similar with the stadium.
And I know that the deputy directors that were on the tour were aware of this and positive of it and very agree with that, that's what we need to do.
Yeah, yeah, let's keep it on the.
We don't have, we don't have a hard, firm plan because we still don't even have a hard, firm design.
Right.
I mean, you know, it's, but it is something that we're already.
Okay, okay, and we'll just keep it on the, keep it on the burner, make sure, you know, that it gets addressed. Right? Alright, cool. Thank you. Alright. Okay, any other questions? Okay, nothing heard, moving on. Laura Chopping Center, David. I think you topped that one, man.
Two stores opening and then, and so like a couple of events. So our mini sale was finally getting opened with September nineteenth. This is a chain store out in China. They use household items, dealing like products. They'll be opening up in our market building, pretty close to the bases. And Lane Jewelry is opening their second location on Oahu. Their first store was open at Alamo Center, we're getting the second one. Great jewelry store and what's even better is at its local. So we'd like to support our local retailers. A few events coming up. Generations Magazine Senior Fair will be held Friday, September thirteenth, ten AM to two PM at Aviva Kai Center Court. This is an information for our seniors. Health Services, Carrying Transitions, Retirement Services and Financial Planning. Kiki Time and Proridge Center, bringing this back, this is done by a group called Read Me International Foundation. And they basically just come in and do interactive readings to children and in our community. And it's a great event for our parents to bring their kids to. That happens September twenty seventh, ten thirty to eleven thirty AM at Aviva Kai Report. Molokai Hot Bread Pop-Up, one of my favorites, I was out to exercise after they were having it. But Molokai Hot Bread is an awesome, awesome food. Topped with strawberries, uva, cinnamon, they'll be doing three pop-ups in September. September twelfth and fourteenth, nineteenth to twenty fourth and twenty sixth to twenty eighth. Those are Thursday through Saturday dates from one to five PM in front of our polister store. Buys Arts and Crafts Pop-Up. This is a handcrafted jewelry pop-up that's with an Asian, Asia-Pacific influence. And I thought to KK Marketplace, this is a group of Leewood Community College alumni that have gone on to produce their own food brands. And they will be bringing them to Proridge Center. Some of the names you may have heard of, three spoonfuls of sugar, any kind snacks, you know, cream, waffles, that's just a few of them. But they will be at, at Proridge at our market center court until September fifteenth, from ten AM to five PM. And finally is in the Ahana Market, is a new market that we put together again, primarily local businesses featuring wide variety of crafts, accessories, apparel, and sweet treats. And just finally, a lot of details here, but you can, you can visit us at proridgeonline.com for details.
Thank you. I have one question, if I can get on to the board members here. Why haven't the Chili's? The Chili's?
Oh, they decided not to renew.
Okay, so any intent on doing?
We have a very, we have a letter of intent.
Okay.
Sign, but very promising.
Good to hear, thank you. And Sears?
First call in next year, me. I honestly don't expect any big announcements remaining during the holiday season. But we do have someone taken, I bet that will be on Kiki King up, which is like a big hit.
Okay.
Thank you, well. Kids.
Awesome.
It's awesome, especially on rainy days.
Yep.
Crazy. So that's what it will make the next week.
So that whole, that whole facility, we're gonna bet that.
Uh, they're taking two floors.
Yes, two floors.
Yeah.
And that whole facility is gonna be like a playground for kids?
Yeah, indoor. Yeah, they have one, it's a great town. And, but this will be the only one that I'm aware of, picking up on the central part.
Yeah. So, awesome, yeah. Look forward to seeing that, actually. That'll be good. Okay, great. Board members, any questions for Laura Chopping Center? Danny, do you want to talk a little bit about the farms?
Uh, I have a couple.
Okay.
Kind of related to that, but more serious.
Go ahead.
Um, I've been thinking a lot about the incident that happened at the Sears partly on the, on the top level last, last month. And just wondering if there's anything in way of like cameras or increased security to kind of ensure that.
What happened, by the way?
A young individual jumped from that top floor and sent a canal identified sometime in August.
We do have cameras, we were fortunate saying that we were able to save, save, save one person prior to this. That area is very difficult to access, actually. It's actually closed off. So we're looking at ways to maybe make that even more difficult to get into that area. But yeah.
Because we see folks up there like quite, quite often, not, you know, not always with that intent, but just hanging out or, you know, I mean, last week at like ten o'clock at night, because, you know, we're doing stuff at the fire and whatnot. And so there's, there's folks out there on, on different, quite often. So just wondering if there's a way to, I don't know, just yeah, reinforce or, or by way of programming in terms of suicide awareness and prevention activities and yeah, if I can support or help in any way. And the other question, um, last, last week at about eleven o'clock, there is an individual who had driven into that Sears Tire park in that area, the one that's, that's combed off, that they do the, the market at. And they basically opened up their trunk and were feeding all of these cats. So there's like a swarm of cats in that area. And so I had called the security because they might understand they feed on that side. And, and when I called, the security said, oh no, they have agreements with the cat feeders to feed at multiple locations throughout Proridge Center. So I wasn't sure if you have.
Location that you've just dotted up or eyes.
And so I had to inform them of that, they had no idea.
Yes, thank you.
And so I could follow up with that. And then I also brought, I wasn't sure if you have Resolution nineteen two from twenty nineteen. It's signed by D L N R, Department of Ed, Department of Health, University of Hawaii, Office of Planning Department, Business, Economic Development and Tourism and Department of Transportation, which basically addresses things like toxoplasmosis and, and concerns due to feeding feral, feral cats. And a lot of those concerns could be fatal for, you know, like high-risk populations and whatnot. So just, you know, like right directly across the street, there are federally protected native wine birds. Even that going that canal, like last week I saw I O, the wine still in that area, Alaihula, things like that. And so that's a concern. But then also we have a cancer center right there, there's a women's center right there that people go for OB-GYN stuffs and things like that. We have Oopona kids that play in the area. And so just, if, you know, if there's a way to, if not minimize, eliminate feeding on a private property that could endanger the people in the area. That, that's my, I'm informing you. We have farms in the area that feed our community.
Right.
And so to have.
I thought the idea of the feeding was to draw them away from the farm.
Well, we do have a trap, but they have, they are away and, and we did move one of the feeding areas away from the farm.
Okay.
Although it's for her momma. And, but, and we try to keep our feeders in those areas. We do have a list of authorized feeders. Unfortunately, we also get feeders that come to the property that are not authorized. They don't feed literally anywhere. And sometimes we catch them sometime, unfortunately, we do not, thank you for this.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, the, the resolution basically is the, the document that talks about all of the different issues and their recommendation is essentially to house cats and not to contribute to the spread of feral cats that could spread those kinds of diseases. So if, I don't know what kind of agreements you have with, with those entities, but if you're able to not allow them to, to feed on private property to be able to increase those populations, then I, I think it would benefit our community.
I think the challenge for us is if you stop the program, then does the cat population increase or?
Doesn't mean that.
That's constantly what we're asking ourselves.
I mean, you could allow, not allow them to feed on, it's like they could still trap.
Hey, David, would you be receptive to maybe doing a meeting sometime next couple of weeks, Danny, maybe? Do you got time?
Uh, potentially, yeah, and this one maybe, yeah.
Yeah.
Next it's.
Danny, myself, you.
Sure.
And I'd like to see what you're doing, like give us a comprehensive review and a little, a little app of what you're doing. Yeah. Because like, this is a, this has been an ongoing issue. And I know that you're trying to get your hands wrapped around, right? I know you're trying very hard.
I know that KS, maybe at my school, was trying to implement it in the Big Island and had to pull back.
Right.
As well, so it, it's a challenging situation on both ways.
Well, yeah, that's.
Certainly one I could listen to.
Yeah, I know you're busy.
You're like.
And Danny's busy and I'm busy and we're all busy, but I think this has just been a systemic ongoing issue for us. And maybe it's time we, I, I'd just like to see what you're doing.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Danny.
So you guys keep track of your cat population, is it getting more or less stabilized?
This was, the population has dropped down to about seventy, sixty or seventy. At one time it was five or six hundred. People would come to the cars and cats would bother our, our customers, getting into the cars, trying to take food from them, they'd be fed all over the over the property. So this is, again, you know, trap duty is not perfect, but it has drastically reduced. And then we still have, unfortunately, people that own cats will just drop them off at the end of the center. And that's the challenge too.
The Humane Society doesn't accept cats.
What's that?
They don't accept cats.
Who?
Humans.
Humane Society.
Need dogs.
They will not, they will accept kittens, they will not accept the feral.
But then these are.
But they will just.
And they used to use a nice name. But no, they don't accept cats.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I.
I would agree with that.
Okay, yeah, let's look down. Lawrence, if you want to be a part of that too, please, by all means, join us. So we appreciate you. Because I think that the more people thinking about it, the more people looking at it, hopefully we come up with a solution that works for everybody, right? Before I let you go, so Danny and I have been talking about meeting with Anthony down there again at, at the farms. So I'll probably have a whole list of things to talk to you about after that.
Sure.
Just be prepared.
Sound good.
Okay. Anything else you would think of?
No, I mean, I think the only thing for those who don't have the actual reso is in the end, in the beat for the result, they do not recommend TNR as a, like trap meter release as a method of minimizing the population. And this is a group of Department of Ed, Department of Health, Department of Land and Natural Resources, Department of Transportation and UH.
How about you and I, we, we tell them some, some coas, those things of action. When we go meet with David, we present those and see if, you know, Hannah's, his ownership group can accommodate.
Sounds good, right? Thanks.
I'll go with it. Alright, thank you, David. Uh, can you say anything for Warren before I let, no. Uh, sorry, go ahead.
Is there any way that you guys can make that, those new road school trucks you guys are doing right by TJ Men's? I'm sorry. You know, you guys, who talks to you guys have a TJ Men's, if you can do like.
Yeah, some.
You have the Saturday. Is there any way that that could go where the Sears, where it's such a bigger area and like it's flat? Like there's like a slant, it's like a small area and I'm going, it looks like a success, but it looks so crowded in that one area. Is it possible to move it into the Sears parking lot or in the back where it is? I'm just wondering, just kind of make more vendors, Danny.
The event works well and there, we also get like a little bit, actually a good impact on retail sales as well from, from the location that it sits. And, and so that's why.
Will be benefits everybody.
Yeah.
Well, I just want.
Oh, yeah.
Just.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay. Any others, any other questions online? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Alright. Okay, maybe Victor, guests.
Good morning. Sorry, good evening.
I know, good evening. Just, just caveat, I, we've already went like way over what I thought we were gonna do, so.
We'll be quick.
Alright.
Yeah, so good evening, Charlie, members of the board, community and the community. I'm just one of our deputy board preparers, officer for the administration, filling in for Lydia who is on a much deserved vacation this weekend next. So happy to be here with the rest of the team. Everyone has our reports, so I would be very super brief. Highlights, we do have a historic, a Pearl Harbor historic boat tour coming up on September the twentieth, which is a Friday from four to about five thirty. We do have a few seats available, so if anyone would like to join the tour, please let us know. We've already got Mr. He, Miss Guest on the tour, so, you know, happy to accommodate anyone else.
So just interrupt real quick, board members, anybody who has an opportunity to want to do that, please do it. I've been, I've literally been here almost twenty years and I've learned something new on that tour and I had no idea how. So it's a great tour, it's a great event and I was well learned, I think. Yeah, it was very good, so.
Maybe a lot of school talk.
Yeah, so, okay, go ahead, ma'am, sorry.
Okay. Sorry, send you my contact. Yeah, perfect. And meantime, I'll, yeah. Get the nearest slot for you. Second thing is included in our report were answers to questions that came up in the July board meetings. Everyone should have that. And then finally, Mo'olelo, that's our newsletter, I love copies in the back, that includes stories about the region, we'll check for what we highlight that's happening on joint base, PRRM, and lots of the other commands in Hawaii. And with that, I'll turn it over to Vic.
Thank you, Chris. We could put enable facilities, the traffic light on Kai, Kai Mani and Ulani, Ulani? Ulune Street is now operational.
Okay, good.
And also the orange construction fence on our utility corridor that's been repaired.
Okay. So I'm today, I just have a feeling that they're gonna cut it again.
Soon we'll beef it up a little bit, but if they cut it, they'll fix it.
So I, so before I started doing this, I was actually on the HOA and, and we would have folks literally cut shaven fences to get into the garden area to do functions, right? So I, you know, it's like, I don't know what we plan on doing, but I think this is just gonna be a systemic issue as long as there's trespassers going through there. No matter what you're putting. Yeah, unless you put like electrical fencing, you know, shock. I don't think you're gonna stop. So, but yeah. But at least, you know, the effort is, is recognized and appreciated.
Yes, sir. Also, we worked with the state of Hawaii to get two large wastewater centrifuges over to our brothers and sisters on Maui. This will help with their wastewater operations and a centrifuge separates the water from the destroyed sludge. Rim Pak, Rim Pak wrapped up off of August first, it's the world's largest international maritime exercise. But part of this Rim Pak was emergency response, rescue, restoration. And that is awesome. But that, I just want to say, segue into our last part. And that's on hurrican drills, hurricane drills. Hurricane season is from June to November. And we worked with our state and city partners on, you know, practice exercises. And we're ready to assist the Hawaii people if we get the call. We pray for the best, we prep for the worst.
Good evening, board members. My name is Stephanie.
Good evening, board members. Uh, my name is Stephanie Abdul. Um, I am the Navy closure task force of public affairs specialists. Um, and so just quick, I grew up in I A. I'm an I A alumni. The year is not important.
And I'm assuming it's after nineteen ninety, right? Yes, okay.
Um, but yeah, uh family, uh close friends live in there, so I A has a very much significance to me. So um so my updates are um while you were in recess, uh the Navy closure task force hosted um an open house on August twenty first at the Monoloa Terrace Community Center, which is an off base community center, so that public could come as well and see what um we were talking about. And the topics were current tank cleaning efforts, ongoing uh closure efforts and operations, and drinking water updates. We also had E P A and the U H Health Registry have a table there as well. Um, we also um have released a press release on August twenty ninth. That personnel will begin cleaning the second set of tanks at the Red Hill well field facility um starting September fourth with approval from Hawaii Department of Health. Um, we will start venting tanks six, replicating the process previously used for tanks seven and eight. So nothing different from the previous ones. And the air quality monitoring data, um now that we are venting or de-gassing, um it is posted on the app and the website. Um, so on the app hourly, so you can track the air quality hourly. And then on the website, it's daily. So um when we uh commence at um twenty hundred A P M every night, we post that data of the entire days of air quality monitoring. Okay, and then um on August twentieth, we provided the operational July update through a press release um highlighting the uh forty brown water monitoring wells um that are in in and around Red Hill. Um, and we um since twenty twenty one, we installed twenty one new wells and by the end of September, we'll do a twenty second well. And then uh all new well locations were extensively coordinated with regulators and numerous stakeholders, including the State Commission on Water Resource Management, Port of Water, and University of Hawaii.
Good, thank you. All right, board members, I know there's gonna be. So Lawrence, go ahead.
You know, border water supply from contaminants. As far as getting to some kind of resolution, I know the Navy said it's not us. It might be the whole stream of them. Um, is there a way, I wonder requesting more testing instead of just saying it's not us? You know, maybe just do more testing and try and satisfy water water supply concerns that you do more of a testing instead of doing it as if it's week to week of testing.
We currently do bi-weekly on all forty wells um for the testing, but it's not um all forty wells shipped every two weeks. Um, we do uh, there is a rotation where we test them. So uh it's forty wells bi-weekly, all forty wells are bi-weekly. And it's according to um our state regulators um and accordance with um their uh.
So 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 like on Monday, Tuesday, let's say you do one through ten wells, then Wednesday, Thursday, you would do ten to fifteen and then so on and so forth. So you hit forty and then you go back and start.
Correct, correct. So it's a bi-weekly.
Is it in conjunction with border water supply so that you guys do it together or you guys didn't just swing it on your side and just reporting what you guys find because I know there's um a lot of distrust among a lot of groups of people. And if you guys did hand in hand with border water supply, I know everybody would feel a lot better as far as the testing. Do you guys include border water supply noise testing efforts?
We've contacted border water supply and we are waiting um one response, but we do um partner with our regulators, our Department of Health and the E P A to help us um make sure that we are doing and we're remaining in standards with state and federal laws.
So when you take the samples, who is there taking that sample?
That um our subject matter experts, I mean, not.
But I think what Lawrence is getting at is like when you take that sample, is there a border water supply sitting there or standing there along with that individual taking that sample?
We can take multiple samples. You want to border water supply, you're just gonna take one. Where water supply can tested, you guys can tested. This is more objective.
Um, I would have to consult with our subject matter experts on water testing. We have a department dedicated to water.
Report that back next month.
Okay. One more thing, before we go. I got the water supply, our water quality report with me, brother. Okay, if you'd like, check them out, see me in the back.
Okay. Uh, hold on, before we get into the board members, any other questions?
I have a question. Are there any um solid plans or has any remediation other than monitoring? So other than testing, have there been any actual remediation, like actual cleaning of the aquifer itself, since there are documented releases?
Um, that is further in our planning. Um, a little bit um more down the road, but there is a remediation plan that is starting.
But it's not public yet.
Not public yet. Yeah, it hasn't been uh hasn't been approved or anything by G O H or E P A, but there is a planning has started.
Is there a reason why it can't happen in conjunction of the closure, since we know that there's fuel in the aquifer already and it's moving?
I'm not the subject matter expert to answer that. I I believe there's a it's a very complicated process.
Would you be able to invite that subject matter expert to this?
Uh, we can ask.
Would you please? And then also, if there was, is there any questions that you want them to follow up on, Danny? That we can try and get for next one? If we can't get the subject matter expert here.
Yeah, that would be the main one. I mean, E P A is in the room. They can speak to things. So like the Navy is pointing to the regulators, which are the O H and the E P A. So I guess back to Lawrence's question is why are we not requiring the Navy to test weekly? If that's a concern that was raised by the community. So that's for the E P A.
Right, okay, so individual from the E P A?
There are a question. How often do you clean the inside, you know, because that's where the contamination starts, right? Then well, how do you check on it? You clean, scrub, disinfect. I know it's a big deal. That's where you go originally.
Yes, so we currently finished clean tanks seven and eight through um so the process, I I'm very simplifying it. Um, but and it's much more complex, but we of course vented, de-gassed, make sure it was okay, safely work in the tanks. And then they went in and cleaned it. And then once it's cleaned, it will not, it's not being used again. It just stays clean and we closed it. So that's what we're doing in succession with the other set of tanks.
Eventually, fill it up with water.
Once it's cleaned and empty, that's it. That's it. We have, that's it. So right now, tanks seven and eight are not, they're cleaned and that's it.
So, sir, you want to tell us?
Yeah, so I'm a environmental protection agency. The public affairs specialist for Hawaii and the Pacific Islands. And uh I've worked on Red Hill since before the fuel spill. Um, and uh just wanted to circle back on a couple of points. One is the P A H issue. So the regulators did receive the letter from the border water supply um on by the P A H is a toxic aromatic hydrocarbon that was in the um in the uh in the wells in I A. And we, I just sent out a letter uh in writing. There should be ten copies. If you guys can pass those two out or order so that all the board members have one. And it basically summarizes kind of some of the questions that we have for the board of water supply in terms of what are we looking for in order to confirm that? Um, initially, just at a first glance, we don't, we don't think that that contamination is coming from the um Red Hill facility. However, we haven't ruled that out. Uh, one of the things that we're concerned about is that P A Hs are something that travels a lot slower um in uh fuel contamination. If you would see fuel contamination come up in a well, you typically see a uh other constituents come out first, or at the very least with the P A H detections. Um, so we um are looking for more information from border water supply. Uh, a couple of the things that they had in their um assumptions were incorrect. They have the ground, use the groundwater model that the regulators, both U S C P A and U H have disapproved from the Navy. There is no groundwater model that has been approved, which is one of the reasons why they've been installing more uh groundwater monitoring wells around the facility since twenty twenty one. Um, and so that's something that, you know, if you use the assumptions of a groundwater model that doesn't work, then that's not something that you can kind of scientifically use to support a hypothesis. So um and with that, I don't know if there's any other questions about.
I think I think Lawrence is on to something, though, when when it comes to like the sampling, right? Because you literally have two entities now pointing fingers at each other. Am I right? But if they were both sits there at the well, holding the sample and then taking as that sample, splitting in two, testing one location and another testing in another location. And if the results come out the same, then nobody can point fingers at anybody because it's been the chain of custody.
Yeah.
It's been maintained the entire time. And so I think there needs to be some kind of uh working relationship between B W S and and the Navy, because right now the point of fingers isn't in anybody anymore.
Absolutely. And our component team did recommend that. So they're sitting apart. We should sit side by side.
Right.
And we wrote to border water supply and like I said, we're still waiting on them.
Okay, okay, good.
You know, as far as the spill, I agree with everyone that the recent spill probably is not the one contaminating. But I read some reports generated by the University of Hawaii and signal was spilled today. That spill would not show up in the groundwater for twenty five, four to fifty years.
Correct.
But when the course of time, there were other spills at Red Hill that was not documented. There was other spills that happened, say, fifty years ago. Those are the spills that may be contaminated.
Yeah, correct. And those are all very good hypotheses in terms of, but they're not something that is so that's something that's scientifically proven right now. Like, we have a lot of doubts. We outlined that in the letters that we sent back to border water supply about how think that it might be coming from more of a localized source. There's a lot of other sources around that area that might contain P A Hs. But again, you are correct, like it could come from the facility, it could come from the fact that we don't have a groundwater model that we um that we have confidence in is also another limiting factor. And hopefully, that can be something that we get. Even fairly soon.
See, the minimum amount that I know about the subject, I know they're trying to track the pool. Where is the contamination coming from? And by the Navy drilling drilling all these wells, testing them, you can kind of see where that trend is going as far as the pool. If the pool is moving west or east or whatever direction, I think that's the thing that they're trying to determine, how is the pool moving? Because Mr. Law at border water supply, you're talking about possibly closing down another well that's in the vicinity. And I don't think border water supply talking about water shortage, but over time, because we're closing down as well, we don't have a shortage.
Yeah.
So should Mr. Law and border water supply highly consider shutting down that well that is supposed to be the I A well now?
That's gonna be up to border water supply and and the state of Hawaii. That's gonna be their decision. They make the decision on the same deal.
But if he needs more facts as far as testing the all of the wells to try and track that pool, because if it is indeed moving forward that well that's in operation, it'll be rooted on his part to get all the facts he can to make a decision. You want to make a step decision without information or facts.
Yeah, so so from the forty wells that we have installed at the facility that are sampled every two weeks, we don't see that trend. We don't see that movement, you know, take a point where it's going out to the I A well as of this time. But again, like you said, like that it's always a possibility. One of the things that we mentioned, I think, in the letter is the Halawa well, the one that uh is closed down preemptively. That's one of the wells that I believe um to me, if I see that again, I think it's not. I think it's not a well that uh. Um, yeah, the Halawa wells, um you'd expect to see uh greater equivalent P A H detections in the border water supplies, Halawa wells first. Um, and so that's a question that we had for uh the board of water supply. So I think that, you know, they have other wells in the area that they can reference in terms of trying to see if they can put pieces together.
Here, last question.
Yes.
Are you guys still purging water into the Halawa street?
We are not. The Navy, I believe, is.
Yeah, I know that we've purged a lot more, but they cut it back decently. As far as the amount they cut back, they cut back a lot of the water that's being purged into all the Halawa street, fifty percent. Almost they cut it back. We have to get, whatever we do, we have to work through the regulators. They dictate to us how much water to flush. One of the reasons is we don't want to overload the ecosystem in the Halawa street. Also, that water is filtered and tested. And we were allowed five million per day, but we cut that down, yeah?
So.
To one point eight step. That's pretty, that's pretty drastic, right?
Yeah.
But just to follow up in layman's terms, you know, like if you eat sheba's, everybody's eaten or had sheba's. When you suck from one point, you draw all the syrup to one side. By cutting back the amount and discharge into the Halawa street, is that causing more of an issue with the potential that the pool might move over rather than trying to keep it in that vicinity? Environmentalists and the chemists and the geoengineers who have got all the stuff, all those things, they come up with a plan and we modify the regulator. But we do it, we're told. We cannot do our own thing. So that's kind of what's going on. And we would like to reuse that water when we get the, get the um for, you know, for irrigate it. You guys just going to going into early to find out these data and cat filters.
So, um, okay, board members, any questions?
You said that the source of the P A Hs could be localized sources. What type of localized sources would you take any may come from?
Well, there's between here and there. There's a lot of fuel handling places, gas stations, constructions, transfers. And uh some of them are run pretty loosely.
Even if there was a house fire, some those cars and engines could go when it runs into the the sewer, I mean, they should.
Yeah, but they should be able to have some kind of testing that can show whether or not it was crude, refined, or it came from a fire source, right?
Correct. The fuel is like a fingerprint when you test it. That's why, like what Alejandro said, you know, we don't know what, what border water supply is is looking at quite yet. Like, they're talking about letters though that it's been leading through up in Red Hill. So we're waiting for more info. E P A is asking for more info. We would like to work more closely.
Sounds like you're gonna get more on this, because we have border water supply talking about.
So let's let's talk about that.
Number, number seven on the letter has some.
So if you guys don't know what this P A H is, right, like you don't know what where origin, what what type of origination point it came from, right? It's like you said, it could be multiple different bands, right? But you just don't know to this point. Okay.
With the E P A, if if you focus on the regulators, why does the source matter for increasing testing? Like, if your if your goal is to really protect the public and and our environment, then why would it matter if the sources from Red Hill were from a commercial project? Wouldn't you want to increase testing to be able to inform the public?
That's something that you should talk to the border water supply about because they're the owners of that well.
No, no, I'm asking you about the testing.
Oh, the testing piece.
Why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you, um, why wouldn't you require the testing piece of here really trying to allow us to have a more importance?
Without knowing the conversation specifically about that, I think that we probably talked to the Navy and we thought that two weeks was was enough at that time.
Even though it was there and then it disappeared, so it went somewhere, but we don't, we don't know where it went.
Why would it say it disappeared? Like, there's no, there's no conclusions in terms of the contamination underneath the Red Hill facility.
So rather than increase testing to come to some sort of conclusion, you're just gonna let that go and assume that two weeks is enough. It just feels like a gamble with with our community as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the other question, and it's something that was raised with the city council uh this past week, was regarding uh the third party testing. And so not just allowing the Navy to test, but selling it to third party. And part of that conversation came up because eight thousand samples were disregarded because of a a lab error. And so.
So it's correct that eight thousand samples were um not able to be analyzed for one particular uh contaminant, T P H. Those samples also had other constituents that followed all the protocol and they were able to analyze the sample. So if you have one sample and one part of that sample is T P H, then that part of the T P H. If you have one sample and one part of that sample is TPH, then that part of the TPH sample was the one that. Could be thrown out and disregarded, but the other, all the other parts of the sample aren't considered. To just be thrown out, like it's it's not that we lost like a year and a half worth of data.
Right, but total petroleum hydrocarbon or TPH, you know, essentially fuels, kind of the key. Contaminant that there could be that.
Well, no, we're actually looking at other fuel related contaminants like benzene and other and other. Fuel related contaminants that you would find alongside TPH. So it's not just TPH, it's like, TPH was used initially as a marker. For if you are to find, yes, some sort of petroleum compound or no petroleum compound, but now. What we've required the Navy to do is to also sample for a slew of other contaminants that were associated with the facility.
So you folks are not considering at all any sort of third party?
No, so the third party issue, that's a really important one, and that's one that. We recently negotiated in this extended drinking water monitoring program to have. The Navy essentially send us a duplicate sample. Not every single sample, but a duplicate sample of of some of the. Of the samples that they're taking out in the field on what we're doing is they're sending it to the EPA laboratories. And one of the EPA laboratories is running those tests using EPA methods, so. Essentially, what we're looking to do is find whether or not US EPA is going to find the. The same example results as the as the Navy.
And will your books data be posted publicly?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, any other questions?
I have one.
May.
Reading page two six, the BWS says the I A wells have been shut off since. Two thousand twenty one, that's three years ago. As mentioned in your July eighth, two thousand twenty four letter. BWS Halawa shaft, Halawa wells and I A wells have been shut off since November of two thousand twenty one. And the fuel release from the Red Hill facility, what are we going to do if we don't have any water to turn off all the? Are this, are they compensated in other ways? We turn off them, but where are we going to get our water? Is there?
So that might be a, that might be a more of a.
You know, when they say they turn it off. You know, you're going to worry if I'm going to get any water or not. Water is the life of the land.
How about you hold that question?
Yeah.
No, no. We're going to have four reasons for that.
It's like electricity or water, you know, you suffer, right? You don't have all the luxury, but she just sort of maybe in a nice, drinking fresh water. It worries me. Because water is the life of the land.
Okay, thank you, babe. Any other questions? Okay, I have one, I have one question and also one, one asked. Are you guys regularly meeting with Board of Water Supply? Or are you guys like ships passing in the night? Is that for Navy or?
We have other meetings with government officials and water water supply attendants, so we actually go to the sea worm, the missus.
Okay, but you guys are not like. Part of a working group that is coming up with different milestones and different types of work activities.
I think it's a.
Okay.
At the very least, I mean, for me, I would, you were in the meeting, so the subject matter experts from DOH, EPA. Navy W S, they get together and it's a really. It hurts my head because I'm talking all the stuff that they absolutely are.
Okay, but they know what each other's doing and they're planning different work activities and saying, hey, okay, you guys do this, we'll do that, they're we're working conjunctionally. I don't want to get that.
That's mine.
That's that's your view of the situation, okay? All right, that the now the ask I have is the dry dock that's being built. Can you give us an update on that next time?
Sure.
I would appreciate it. I was out in Fort Island today, out there behind this pack and the. The training center back there, and I was looking at it, and I'm like, you know, when's the last time I got briefed on this, so I like to, I like to know what's going on with that.
Absolutely.
That was a what, three billion dollar project?
More than that, but I think four or five.
Since World War Two.
Yeah, Vegas once, it's World War Two. So so I'd like to know what the status of that is, thank you. All right, community members, any more questions for Navy? I thought we were going to get through the monthly reports here, now we're an hour and a half in. Okay, who do we got on the line? Okay, we'll start with Charles, question, go ahead. Tara. Tara, Tara, okay, Tara, question.
Tara Rojas, okay. Aloha, so my two comments and questions are for both the Navy and the EPA. You know, just gonna get right to it, that we just got off a panel, the V, and it was the Board of Water Supply letting us know. That you all are having the meeting right now, so. We know that Navy and regulators, you're not stepping up, you're just kicking the can around. Back and forth, back and forth, it's this person, it's that person, is there with, no. Ernie Lau looked straight at the camera at city council when they passed the resolution. To have the Navy test weekly. And with third party testers, testing. And he said, Navy, I know you're listening. Please let us know. What is in the water? So that we know what we're dealing with and so that we know what we need to do. As your, as the I A board members mentioned. Ka'amilo is on the brink of being shut down. And you all are there, the EPA, I hope you're back up, you know, at the at the table EPA, because you guys are right there next to each other. And just again, kicking the can around from one to the other, and you can do that for years. So Navy. Three years going on now, let us know what is in the water. Be transparent, you're very good at deflecting, you're very good at just doing your job. And how I can go to every every board meeting. And I'll speak up and everyone. And I will say the same thing, we went to the panel with all of you on the table in Mauna Lua. And we said the same thing. And you guys just deflect. What is in the water?
And you're.
Yeah, yeah, and then do not talk about with your papers and notes in hand. As if five million gallons of flushing is nothing, especially on the brink of shutting down a third water, a well. So. The time for accountability is now. Get the people who do have the information. With you all to all these board meetings that you all go to. Get the top people there, the people who know, because if not, what you're all trying to do is just tire us out. And just have us wait one more month to the next meeting to say the same thing, and then the next meeting and the next meeting. This is three years going on, we need to know what's in the water, we need to have you do the testing, regulators, you need to have you do your job. EPA and DOH and Navy, because Board of Water Supply is the only one stepping up and protecting us on behalf of us. We're just tired of it, you guys are right at the center of this crisis. And we are, we we also just had the Oahu. Watershed management plan, the East Honolulu part, you know, updated, there are limits to the amount of water. That each Ahupoa has now flushing five billion gallons at face, oh, yeah, we're doing it, we're, we don't know what can I do and just, just, it's just. Ridiculous, it's three years in, people are still suffering, water is still coming out colored and smelling and people are still being affected. Let us know what's in the water, BOE does want this transparency, does want this communication with you, Navy and B and EPA. It's just enough, it just enough already, you all are adults, you all are need to be held accountable, there is a public water trust. For on behalf. Of the health of every single person here and for our V in Oahu. So.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please sit back and respond, mahalo.
Chair. It's okay, it's okay, I'll ask Tara's questions before, we have that information here. Whoever's welcome to look at it. We can check it out.
I get it, just.
Got it, just. Okay, thank you, ma'am, for that, appreciate it, who's next? Okay. Okay, Kathleen?
Hi, everybody, how are you? Kathleen Pachinui, Public Information Officer, Board of Water Supply. Really quickly, just to respond to a couple of comments, I know Mr. Kawata will be doing more later. A couple of things, we actually do meet quarterly with the three admirals, Admiral Barnett and Admiral Williams. I think that, I'm sorry, just the two admirals, we do quarterly with the admirals, so just so you know, chair. Not just all the subject matter roundtables, but we actually meet directly with the admirals themselves. And secondly, we have actually been asking to sample from the Navy. With the Navy for about three years to do split sample testing. So I've been in those meetings when we have asked the admirals this question, so I just wanted to clarify the record, thank you.
Hold on, so ma'am, the Board of Water Supply is saying, we've asked the Navy. To be there when they do the sampling. And the Navy said, well, we've asked the Board of Water Supply to be there when we do the sampling. So what's going on? Who's speaking French here? Because it seems like somebody is.
Well, I can, I can tell you, the Navy has not given us permission to do so, and we have asked the Navy, but they have not given us permission.
Who hasn't given you permission?
The Navy.
Okay, and the Navy who? The Admiral, saying you need every quarter? Okay, all right.
They have not given us permission yet to do so.
Just pointing of the fingers for BWS and Navy because it's childish, actually. Get together. All right. Ma'am, can you, hold on, can you provide me a list of the names of those admirals? I appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Okay, one more. All right, Wayne.
Good evening, Chair members of the board, Wayne Tanaka with the Circle Bahoi. Just real quick, just wanted to raise three points. Sorry, can you hear me? Okay, so you know, we want to emphasize first the precautionary principle, which I think Tara previous testified alluded to. Basically, it's the idea that when it comes to our water resources. You don't, in a case of scientific uncertainty, you want to err on the side of safety and protection. And this is the, the Supreme Court is establishes as a law since for a century. So, you know, you know, I appreciate this uncertainty bound where. These poticy cyclic aromatic hydrocarbons may be coming from, but. Because of that uncertainty, because and even with the additional. Potential sources even more so, I think that just counsels more data, right, more more robust and and granular data. And those data points that we would get from weekly testing would also inform. You know, it would inform our ability to 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 build and ground truth, the groundwater model and the contaminant fit and transport model. That is still pending. And, you know, you wait, you wait for scientific certainty for anything environmental, you you're going to be dead before you take action. And and fortunately, that's the long way, and so encourage the Department of Health, especially since they're subject to the Constitution. And the public trust that, you know, they incorporate that thinking into how they deal with this situation. I I do want to also emphasize that we don't have a groundwater model or a contaminant fit and transport model. Which are actually required under the twenty fifteen ALC, so it's been about a decade and we still don't have these critical. Pieces of information, and the EPA unfortunately was not able to, and the DOH were not able to get the Navy to produce these like really important. Models until it's too late, right, and so now we're shooting in the dark, now we don't know, that's why we have this uncertainty, and so I I don't think it's. It's it's kind of disingenuous to use the lack of. You know, scientific certainty, the lack of these models as an excuse to further delay action when, you know, the delay and. Putting these things together is what is causing this in this pickle.
You know, I'm hearing a lot of what it could or should have, you know, that's what I'm hearing, okay?
Okay, can I, can I, I'm just, I'm just trying to raise some some points for consideration, can I continue?
Just, just hold on, okay? I'm kind of just tired of it, honestly, at this point, okay, we are dealing in the present. Okay, what happened fifteen years ago, it was what happened fifteen years ago, what happened ten years ago is what happened ten years ago. Now, what happened three years ago is what we're dealing with in the present today, okay? So if you don't have five years ago, hold on, sir, just for a second, let me say my spiel here, all right? Then you don't have models from fifteen years ago, okay? What we can do, though, is is try to deal with the situation we have today, okay? And how's a model from fifteen years ago going to help us with the situation we're dealing with today? That's the question I have for you.
So I think, sorry, I think you might, I might have misspoke. We, ten years ago, there was, there was supposed to be models that were supposed to be built, we don't have that, right? So as you're building those models, as you're building these models, we need data points to to ground truth them, right? The reason why we don't have these models because what the Navy kept coming up with wasn't matching up to to measured groundwater data, quantitative data.
Solution today then, in your opinion, what is the solution today? Rather than complain about a problem that happened ten years ago, what is the solution today?
It's to get the data that can ground truth these models as well as give us a better sight picture of what might be doing and happening on the ground.
Ten years ago. Is that what you're telling me? The solution today is to get the ground model laws from ten years ago?
No, the 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 solution is to get data so that we can build these models, we can finalize them and ground truth them, so we have some more seconds here about. Sorry?
Could you, could you, could you, could Board of Water Supply go out today and get that data themselves?
No, from what we've just been told, some of the data points are, they're not being allowed to, you know, access the marching well samples and also we don't have. Well, network.
Who's not allowing them to do that?
So, one, it's not, we don't have access to the robust set of marching model data that would give us. That ground information, two, we don't have enough marching wells, so that's part of the.
Hold on, sir, you just said to this group, somebody is not allowing them to get access to that data, who is that?
I'm just basing this off of the conversation that we just had, and also that.
Okay.
Why would, okay.
I got.
That being said, there's multiple dimensions, right, so if we want, it's not just existing groundwater wells, we need more groundwater marching wells being installed, you have robust.
What I'm hearing around here is a lot of complaining, okay? I'm not hearing a lot of ideas about solutions.
I'm, I'm literally saying what the solutions are, which is we need more groundwater, groundwater monitoring wells. We need groundwater mining wells and then we need. More robust sharing of transparent data that's reliable.
Okay. Having Board of Water Supply standing next to the Navy guys as they're collecting the samples from the wells, is that a solution?
Uh, no, because you're, it's partly of a part of the solution, yes, it'd be good to have split sampling, but we also need more marching wells, we need, we, it would be helpful to have more. Like experts, third party experts. I mean, so we're looking at.
I'm going to tell you right now, okay? Board of Water Supply came from the board and said it costs a billion dollars to drill more wells, a billion dollars with a B. So how many more wells?
Is this recording, is this meeting being recorded by any chance?
Yes, it is, this whole meeting is being recorded.
Excellent. Um, the third point I want to make, I don't want to take up all your time, but there was a statement saying suggesting that because jet fuel moves faster than. Posycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons that it's, you know, the conclude, the hypothesis is suspect that the PH may have come from Red Hill that was detected at I A well. I want to emphasize that there's, I don't know what the basis of that statement is because we, again, we don't know the. When these things might have been introduced in Ocrifer and we don't have a contaminant fit and transport model. So what a contaminant fit and transport model does is it, it helps you predict what happens to contaminants over time. Within the groundwater context, right, so like. Fuel will break down into different parts, some will sink, some will float, some will stick. And you're going to have these really different kinds of movements, it's not those uniform like flow like groundwater, which which itself isn't super uniform, so I just wanted to point that out because. It might be a little bit misleading to rely on. This general, very general statement about how jet fuel moves compared to possibly like hydrocarbons. And we don't, yeah, so just clarifying that.
Thank you for clarifying, anything else? Yes, ma'am, go ahead. So, hold on, sir, go ahead, ma'am.
The Navy submitted a draft groundwater flow model to DOH, EPA and University of Hawaii in July, while we are revises. And the final plan will be coming this month.
Okay.
And that's like Wayne said, it would include a contaminant fit and transport model that helps under that help contaminants move change and interact with the environment over time.
Okay, great.
Also, the stuff Wayne is talking about was also at the open house recently. We had the subject matters, ex, and we had chemists, geoengineers who explained and showed. Exactly what he's talking about that they said we got to do it.
Okay.
So I was at, I was at the open house and then that. The the details, the specifics as to how contaminants break down and flow through the Ocrifer was not part of any presentation, so. Is that, is that Vic?
Yes, Wayne.
Hi, Vic.
Hi.
How you doing?
Okay, all right, all right, Danny, and this is it, we're moving on.
Yes, I'll be that one. You said it was happening. No, but she just said it. Flow model will come. Yeah, can you, can you? Um, and we'll make one for public, we'll put on the website for everybody, can you send it to the board?
I'm not kidding about those admirals, I seriously, I want you to give me the contact you got. Really, because I'm also going to talk to Tracy about, I want to talk to the director of BWS as well. Okay? I'm tired of listening to this, absolutely, three years. Okay, thank you, thank you, Wayne. Sorry to be so, but it's just aggravating, right?
I'm sure with, excuse me, I just have a lot of reminders. I might have mentioned it before, but all drinking water and groundwater sample results are available on the Seawater website.
Yes, yes.
So I encourage everyone, please.
And we do encourage everybody to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for pointing that out, for the, the. Okay, alright, um, moving on. Okay, state with the bar, State, State Department of Transportation Highway Division, KCR.
Good evening, Chair Woods.
You are a wonderful, brave individual.
Good evening, Chair Woods, uh, members of IAN, we were born, uh, KCR from the State D O T Highways Division. At July's meeting, I mentioned I received an email from Tricia Repelli from our council member Cordero's office concerning the overgo intruding into constituent, um, Conley Seki's property. Our landscaping crew cut back the overgo during my July twenty-six inspection, but I will follow up with our district office on having their crew do more, do a more thorough job next time, since I still saw some overgo intruding to Miss Seki's property. Also, at July's meeting, I mentioned that Senator Alafonte sent me an email about the overgo across Miss Seki's, uh, property as you hit, uh, Maoka on Halawa Heights Road. Our landscaping crew had cut back the overgo during my July twenty-fifth inspection. At the July's meeting, I mentioned receiving an email from Senator Alafonte about another homeless encampment at the intersection of Polymorme Street and Comermer Highway. With the assistance of the city's homeless office, the encampment was cleared from within the highways right away and in the stream bed, which is the city's jurisdiction during my August nineteen inspection. This area has been included in our weekly inspection list to ensure the homeless encampment does not return. I also would like to thank Representative Yu for his July night email and this Google picture where motorists were making illegal left turns onto the H one freeway going westbound at the Looney Street intersection. After doing a quick field investigation, we had two no-left turn signs at the intersection, plus white and yellow longitudinal channelized curbing to prevent motorists from making the illegal left turn. Talking to our traffic branch, we made some modification by installing a larger no-left turn sign as motorists approached the intersection. And we modified the payment striping and curbing system to reduce the lane width of the H one on-ramp, making it harder for motorists to make the illegal left turn. Our district maintains completed insulation and added three safety barrels during my September sixth inspection. If motorists continue to make these illegal left turn movements, uh, the board or elected officials, um, will need to ask HPD to help monitor the intersection. I want to thank Representative Yu for his July sixteen email and this, and this Google map, uh, where there were some overgo that near Ala- Alani Street. Our district maintenance crew had cut back the overgo during my July twenty-fifth inspection. I want to thank Senator Alafonte for his July twenty-second email about the overgo at nine-nine-nine-one-seven Halawa Heights Road. Our maintenance crew did cut back the overgo during the, on, my August ninth inspection. I want to thank Tricia Repelli from Councilmember Cordero's office for forwarding these pictures in her July twenty-nine email from their constituent Emmy Sumida or Sumida Watercress Farm about a homeless encampment within their property and under the Kala-Osh Spring Bridge. Our homeless coordinator had, had the encampment removed during my August eighth inspection and completed the cleanup on August ninth. This error has also been included in our weekly inspection list to ensure the homeless encampment does not return. I want to thank Senator Alafonte for his August seventh email about a damaged fence in the median along Commemmy Highway near my mother's shopping center. Our maintenance crew repaired the fence during my August twenty-sixth inspection. And finally, I want to thank Representative Yu for his August nineteen email about trash bags that were, uh, been sitting on the shoulder for several weeks as you approach Looney Street intersection. Our district office, we had removed the trash bag during my August twenty-second inspection. This concludes my report. If you take any questions at this time.
Alright, thank you. Board members, any questions for DOT? Go ahead. Thank you, so I'd like to thank you guys for removing those legal signs off of the DOT fence by a cop on Looney Street on the way to the freeway. They had some candidate signs on there and some other signs, and thank you for removing them pretty quickly.
You're welcome.
Board members, any other questions? Okay, uh, committee members, any questions for DOT? Nothing? Okay, alright, thank you, Casey. And really appreciate the responses that you've been given, especially when it's been dealing with the homeless folks. Um, uh, you know, just, uh, you know, it's been quick and, uh, efficient, so, okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Alright, finally, our monthly reports. Uh, we're moving on to board business. So, let's start off. Filling, uh, one vacant seat in Sub District Four, do we have any candidates? Going once, going twice, nothing heard. Okay, moving on. Uh, Department of Facility Management, presentation for stormwater fee proposal. Oh, this is close to my heart. So, let's, uh, Wakimoto, Mr. Wakimoto, David Marsler, okay, great, welcome. You're in the hot seat, as you can see, uh, we will be gentle.
Ask any questions.
Okay, great.
Kind of do as quickly as possible and then get a package, so. I can both pull up the presentation, and then just quickly, I'll introduce, so I'm Randall Wathfotto, the program administrator for our Stormwater Quality Division under our city's Department of Facility Maintenance, I'm representing our department to provide an update on what is referred to as our stormwater fee proposal. And on this call, we have also one of our technical team members. Julie Betines, he'll be helping me with the question and answer portion of this presentation. Thank you again, Chair Woods, for allowing us to be here, and members of the, of the board, as well as members of the company. So this is just a, a quick, um, just a reminder that our stormwater system here on Wahu is separate from the sanitary sewer base water system that is managed by our Department of Waste Environmental Services. And that's also a separate system for the drinking water supply that's managed by the Border Water Supply. For the most part, the storm drainage system that's all by the city is managed by the Department of Facility Maintenance. Next slide.
Now, one second, we have someone online showing that it's not sharing. Uh, everybody online, can you see this screen of the presentation?
Very.
Yes, we're getting, yes, we're getting good feedback. So, five minutes. Right, we should be able to go. And back to this slide, sir.
Thank you. So, uh, for Wahu, the stormwater system, it's a very complex system. There's miles of, thousands of miles of, of pipes, as well as tens of thousands of drain structures located throughout the island of Wahu. Uh, we're dealing with a lot of things like aging infrastructure, where most of it is running beyond its lifespan of fifty years plus. Uh, so you're starting to see a lot of that failure. Uh, we're also dealing with localized flooding because of climate change and increased rainfall events, more intense, as well as, um, dealing with, uh, a shortage of, uh, good drinking water, um, or our natural resources in order to provide that fresh water supply. And of course, lastly, are dealing with some of the sea level rise issues in our coastal communities, where you're starting to see some of the water that's coming from the tide that's coming out the drain system as well. So the value of effective stormwater management is essentially helping to, um, capture, treat, and also to, uh, try to mitigate a lot of the stormwater issues, whether it's drainage, flooding, pollution, and being able to provide a much more cleaner and safe environment for all. So what does a stormwater utility, when we talked about it, mean for Wahu? When we reached out to our stakeholders, as well as to the public and others, uh, what we've heard commonly is that what they want to see is clean water, matching stormwater effectively, providing a healthy and safe environment for all, uh, also getting community involvement, so that people are aware of how the funds are being spent, as well as ensuring accountability and meeting the community needs. And then lastly, is a shared responsibility, where everyone pays a fair share, in which everyone can also get a credit, and that makes everyone being able to make a difference. So what is a stormwater utility? Basically, what we've been talking about is it's a dedicated fee-based method of funding the services and investments needed to maintain Wahu's stormwater system and to protect our streams and ocean. Uh, we have a dedicated website here at stormwaterutility@wahu.org, and we invite anybody to go on there, and we meet Monday with our stakeholder advisory group members, and we post all our presentations, as well as the meeting minutes and the general content website. So currently, what the city is spending for its stormwater, um, program, management program, you can see here, it's just a breakdown. Generally, it's a mix of your property taxes, which goes into a general fund, which pays, basically pays for all the services for the city, whether it's police department, fire department, emergency management, and all the other departments that are tapping into that general fund. So it's worth probably about eighty million dollars that is being, uh, used towards the stormwater programs. And then there's a portion of it you see on the top, which is coming from the highway fund, which is really coming from the gas tax that whenever people are pumping, um, at the, at the stations, then that amount, there's a certain amount that comes, which covers the cost for roadway-related work, but because the storm drainage system runs under most of the roadways, that's why a portion of it is being used towards the, the management of the stormwater system. Uh, when you look at that, you can see that, uh, the highway fund is declining, because less people are pumping or electric vehicles, or of course, that money is getting less and less. And then the general fund is always being pressured, because there's a lot of programs, whether it's affordable housing, homelessness, and other things that are having to tap into that general fund. And one of the major issues with this program is that we cannot issue debt, in which case we're having to pay as we go, so each year is what we're covering the cost for the stormwater services. Next slide. Uh, so just in summary again, with the general funds, like I mentioned, it's about eighty million dollars coming from, uh, real property taxes. Uh, we're not able to secure bonds for that, so not able to spread it out over a longer period of time, so which affects our ability to do some of these operating, multi-year operating plans. Uh, also, because of emergencies that we're dealing with, it also, uh, majorly affects our funding, um, strategy, because when the emergencies occur, and there's a lot of cuts that has to be, where we're having to divert funds in order to address those emergencies, which means, basically means that there's less money to spend on some of the essential services. So we're not able to do any of the long-term planning, and a lot of that deferred maintenance is more and more bigger. And then lastly, is the financial burden on your taxable properties, which is eating into that general fund, which is mainly your tax property, residential, commercial, but local, state, and federal government do not contribute, but they, they still benefit from the stormwater system. So what would that stormwater fee and how would that change the services? So what stormwater utility and fee-based program, what we're proposing is that it uses fees instead of the property taxes. Uh, all properties, as I mentioned, contribute, so both taxable and non-taxable, which includes government properties. Uh, all of these revenues would go into a dedicated special fund or enterprise fund. And so those services would all have to be tied directly to that cost of service for stormwater management purposes, only for that reason. And then, of course, because with a fee, there would always be opportunities for credits, which means that anybody would be able to qualify to reduce their, um, their fees. What a stormwater utility would not provide is that it wouldn't establish a new agency or department. Uh, when we say utility, what we're just really saying is it's a mechanism for the funding, but not necessarily creating a whole new department. And it doesn't affect any of the land use regulations like zoning or land use, and so, you know, basically, it doesn't tie into the regulations. So when we see what we're proposing, uh, it, what a stormwater fee would basically do is provide stable operating, as well as revenue fund capacity to support the long-term, um, implementation of capital improvements, so like some major projects to repair and replace a lot of our aging infrastructure, but also do things like green infrastructure, as well as addressing things like flooding, drainage, and sea level rise issues. And if you go to that website, as I mentioned, there is a study there, um, we had done a study a few years back, in which case it summarizes what we are talking about here. When we look at the stormwater fee that we're proposing, it's all based on the amount of impervious area. So you can see an example of a typical residential property, where we have the house, the driving, uh, the driveway. Those are all considered hard surfaces, so where water hits it, it runs off, and that generates runoff. And so that's the nexus of what the fee would be based on, while things like impervious area, like grass and that's big, big, where water can soak into the ground, that wouldn't be part of the fee. Uh, fees would have to be related to the city's cost of stormwater services, as I mentioned, so both maintenance, as well as capital improvements. And as we mentioned earlier, is the federal government would be required to pay for their fair share of fees if it were to be adopted. And this is because a amendment to the Midwest Clean Water Act was done many years ago, in which case that was what required that, um, for the, basically, the legal mechanism for, to force the, force federal government to pay for their portion of the fees. Uh, this is not something new, there's over two thousand US cities that have adopted these stormwater utility fees, and the US courts have consistently upheld this method of using impervious surface as a method of charging for these fees. So this is just a comparison, so what we're seeing now, and this is just still something that's in a draft form, but you can see from this current year in, uh, this past fiscal year twenty-four, roughly about a hundred and ten million, uh, both capital and operating, uh, as well as equipment costs, but what we need to get to is about roughly about a hundred and sixty-three million, so almost about fifty to sixty million more that's needed, and that would be able to provide the support for both increased stream maintenance, um, stream torrentary maintenance, track deduction, screen infrastructure, as well as inspections. And with that, we would also dedicate at least twenty-five million per year to address that aging infrastructure, to reduce a lot of our, our structures that need that repair. Uh, when, again, this is again, still in, uh, draft form, we're actually doing the calculations as we speak, uh, using the information for the current real property tax information, as well as the amount of impervious area. What you see on the right side is just a aerial imagery that we use to determine how much impervious surface on each property, and then we overlay it with each of the property boundaries in order to do that calculation. Uh, the estimated rates that we're looking at is roughly about seven-ish dollars per thousands per fee, that would be the the lowest rate, uh, what we call tier one. And that's comparable to cities like in Tacoma, Washington, as well as in Boulder, Colorado. Uh, ti- uh, typical single-family home would be about twenty-three to twenty-seven dollars per month, while the shopping center, it's much larger, would of course pay a lot more fees on that because of the long impervious area. Uh, credits would be allowed for all properties, and what we're proposing at this time is about, up to a max of sixty percent. And in addition to that, we're looking at hardship programs for low income, as well as fixed income, such as who would be able to qualify for those kind of assistance programs. So what we're working on right now is this, what we refer to as a credit and rebate manual, so this would outline what type of credit somebody could apply if they were to do improvements to the site to increase the amount of permeable areas. And what that basically is, is a, a reduction on your fee on a regular basis, versus a rebate, which is a one-time payment for installing something like a rain barrel, and you get a one-time payment for that. Excellent. And in addition to that, I can mention affordability, um, option that we're considering, so some of the things we've discussed is to using ways to, um, look at their income, household income, being able to offer things like a reward rate, so putting them essentially on the tier one, which is that seven-ish amount per month, as well as for small nonprofits, which would be based on their revenue, which is about point five, that's what we're considering. We're also in discussions with our Department of Environmental Services with their sewer fee customer assistance program, so being able to operate as a one-stop shop, so you could actually get a reduction on your sewer bill, which you could also realize a reduction on the stormwater bill if you qualify. And then, of course, encouraging for any kind of stacking, so being able to create credits, rebates, portability, things like that. So that's, um, if you go to the next slide, this is just emphasizing that we're allowing for multiple things, so somebody could just not only qualify for one, but they could actually qualify for all, depending on their household income, as well as being able to demonstrate that they've implemented things that incentivize reducing by how much. But this is just an example of what you can see when we talk about stacking, so if you were to install a rainwater containment, like a rain barrel or a cistern, you would get that automatic rebate front. Uh, but also you could qualify for credit, where you're actually getting a reduction on your fee on a monthly basis. And then, in, in addition to that, we're gonna likely be offering, depending on how we're able to structure it. And then in in addition to that, we're going to likely be offering depending on how we're able to structure it, because things like rebates or also small grant programs that were certain ones that applied, that they would be able to. Receive certain amount of funds to be able to implement the things that we're encouraging people to do. And then lastly, if you are in that um certain financial circumstance that it could qualify for some type of hardship or customer assistance program. So this is what, just a quick way, we don't have exactly the dates yet mapped out. This is just to let you know that there's going to have to be. Three council meetings in order to adopt this ordinance. Um, it does go through city council for a basically consideration. And in the end, city council would be able to make that determination if this does go into effect. We are looking at sometime in maybe late twenty twenty-four or early twenty twenty-five when introducing it. Uh, we actually have a a meeting with the mayor this week to discuss. Uh, some of the timing and his thoughts in terms of when, we do know that the mayor is supportive of what we're talking about. We just want to get his blessings as well as when the time when we need to come forward to city council. And that's my last slide. So any questions?
Right, board members, any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jane.
Um, you didn't mention condominiums. All right. So is the fee going to be charged to the association? And then will the association then have to collect it from their homeowners or are the homeowners of the bill kind of like they go to the water bill?
So, no, thank you for that question. So, and we hear that quite a bit. Um, so it's all goes back to the property, to whoever the property owner. But yet it can be done, you know, depending on what the association or what the um condominium wants to do. So we'll work with them. So whether it just.
Is that part of the ordinance or uh is that something?
Just the property itself. So it's based on that actual property, the amount of impervious area and in the calculation, the bills that go to the property owner.
Because with the condominium, uh. The homeowners own their unit plus a percentage of the common elements.
Yeah, so it could be distributed just like how the water supply is. Uh, we are, we also have um information from their customer accounts as well. So it's just a matter of how it wants to be structured, but typically it goes to the property owner and it's really the property owner.
And you said that for a homeowner, then it would be about twenty-three dollars a month?
For a typical single family, we're talking about maybe about thirty-five hundred to about thirty-seven fifty, a lot of. Impervious area on a typical single-family home.
So what would it be for condominium?
For condominium, same thing, it would be, well, not for each ten, each unit.
Hi.
Yeah, this is, so JB is our our technical consultant.
No, that's a, it's a great question. Thank you for that. For condominiums, um, townhouses, it would be probably substantially lower. And part of setting up a utility, which takes, there's a long lead time before, between an ordinance and when anyone would see a bill. We would work with um condominium owners to figure out how do you, how would you like to apportion, like you just said, that proportion of the the common ownership among owners. Condominium associations can do it in many different ways. They can, the bill can go to the master association, or you can make a determination of what you want billed to each unit. Um, generally speaking, say a condominium owner had twenty-two hundred square feet, they'd be more in the range of fourteen dollars per month. Um, the twenty-three is more for like, think of a a new build, single-family in Kapale. As a typical condominiums, apartments would be much lower than than that single-family charge.
But with a with a condominium, you know, the ownership is, I mean, my condominium, we have three hundred owners. So does that mean that utility would be sending three hundred bills to the three hundred owner or a bill to the?
Uh, if part of it can depend on, it 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 really does vary by the desires of that own, of that association. If folks already get an individual water or sewer bill, um, makes it easier. We've already got those accounts and those costs can be distributed. Um, if there's only one water or sewer bill to the master association, it may be easier to um do that through the HOA's fees, which I've seen. Um, I've worked with a lot of associations who've done it that way, but there will be no prescription that you must do it a certain way. Um, so long as a a responsible owner pays that bill, how you divide that up and how it's billed is really up to the preference of that of the group.
And in fact, I'm just raising one thing. I mean, with the condominium, we have maintenance fees that are given to each of the owners. That maintenance fee is usually budgeted in the, right now, during September, August, September, October. And 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 the board members usually determine what the maintenance fees are going to be based on. The expenses of that current year. So if you're going to be giving. Additional expenses to condominium owners, you're going to have to have a long lead time so that it can be. Factored in to the maintenance fees that are going to be charged unless you're going to be charging the homeowners separately. And then the association won't have to get involved. We don't have to get, you know, be bothered with that.
No, that's excellent.
Yeah, an excellent point. Uh, Randall, do you want to speak to the lead time that we're looking at?
Yeah, so I was just going to mention that even though we're presenting it, we're talking about going to city council, it doesn't mean that that's when the person will actually get some kind of bill. When it gets adopted. We do recognize that there's going to be a lead time, a time that needs to be provided to establish that whole entire billing system to verify and. Double-check and triple-check all the that different type of um, you know, properties that's going to be assessed this fee. And also giving the opportunity for somebody to appeal that decision and make any adjustments. So it's likely looking at. When, let's say, if it were to be adopted, let's say sometime in twenty twenty-five, it's probably at least eighteen months to two years before anybody would actually see.
Thank you. Oh, is is there a bill number?
Not yet, because it hasn't been introduced to city council yet.
Oh, when it's introduced, can you provide us with the bill number so that we can follow?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Uh, we do follow. Yeah, uh, I'm upset about just the basic concept of having a stormwater fee put on us. We pay our property taxes expecting certain basic things, police, fire, roads, garbage, sewage. So having us pay extra for something that we expect. Is very annoying, very disturbing. And yes, we have aging infrastructure. We need to have the storm drains redone, but you know, we waste. A lot of money on projects like the stupid pedestrian bridge over the Alai Canal, sixty million dollars that. No local person really wants, Chinese investors in the condominiums. But with most local people, and I was one of the last to sign the petition from the people who use that up down there. But anyway, I don't want to go to that, but there is money for projects like that. And more rather than a pedestrian bridge over the Alai Canal, they should build it, redo the storm drains. And saying like, oh, it's only going to be twenty-five dollars a month. It heads up the idea that, oh, some, you can get rebates, you can get that. Well, someone still has to pay the fee. So the concept of us having an additional fee for something that we expect as a basic result of our property taxes is very concerning. And I hope that the city council has the same viewpoint. It's like, you know, we we don't need the extra fee. We need to allocate our resources, our tax, property taxes appropriately.
No, and we appreciate that from you, Tom. And we do know that, you know, it is challenging, but we also recognize that, you know, like some of the things that we see with a fee-based program. It provides a lot more um opportunities to really um allow for the program to flourish because you're able to now issue your own debt. Coming up with very good bonds to be able to support larger capital improvements, uh, which is not available at this moment. Um, also being able to qualify for grants where we can provide um matching funds, which is always what you need. In order to qualify for a lot of these federal-funded projects, which currently we can't really project and we can't really anticipate if we're going to have that money available when applying for these grants. So that's another um thing that comes with a a an enterprise fund, a special fund.
I appreciate applying for the grants, hopefully getting them, but you still want to have a fee proposed.
I think we see it as being a way to be able to project and be able to have a reliable source that you can now do more of that long-range planning. That right now, right now, it's on a year-to-year basis. So we don't really know what we're going to get next year. We could actually get a lot more with the um. Less funding because of other priorities, right? So um, that's something that we may not know what we're going to get on a year-to-year basis. But with a stormwater fee, similar to your water supply and also with the Department of Environmental Services where there are sewer fees. They can project out thirty, forty years. So they have these long-range plans to address a lot of that. Infrastructure that they need to um come up with for plans to upgrade it because they have that secured funding that they know they can reliably use each year, year in, year out. Which is right now, we don't have that. I hope that answers some of that question. I understand the issue.
No, I just, it's not, it's rare to have a government decrease fee. So once that fee's there, it's not going to go away. We're still paying taxes for this national market. So uh, and that's not a joke, but it's real.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, anybody, any other board members?
Chair.
Okay.
Chair Wood.
Okay, crazy, just two seconds. Crazy, go ahead.
So I got a question for you, so. Do you guys still want to receive your funding from the property taxes as well too? Uh, or is that, or is your budget going to slowly be coming from this?
Right, because that's the question I'm asking, right, is bring up that funding slide again real quick.
Wait, wait, let him answer, because I want to hear this too.
Well, I want to hear this too, and it's in line with yours. So that eighty million dollars in that general fund, right? Is that going to, is that going to drop for us as property owners? Say, we're not going to be paying that in our property tax? And because you know what, in all honesty, I don't have a problem paying your fee. As long as it gets taken out of my, I don't have to pay that property tax. And then that, we do know that that's okay. Yeah.
So twenty-five dollars a month places you on another additional, additional three hundred dollars here.
And so, I mean, well, we do understand that, you know, that is something that was at one point considered, but with. Currently, right now, that is not really what's on the table, consideration. Uh, the problem is. Then what you're asking for is a tax increase. Well, it's a fee again.
No, 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 it's a tax increase.
But the intent is because there's, again, the general fund is pressured, like we mentioned. There's just not enough funding to cover all the services that's what's needed, right? Just mentioned. So we don't believe that that funding is always going to be available on a year-to-year basis, especially in order to look at the program to grow to where it needs to be. I get the idea separating it off so that you get, you can become your own entity and you can do your own bonds and stuff like that. That's what you're talking about here. Um, I get that, okay? Totally get it. But you already got funding out of the general fund to do the work that you're doing now. So if you're going to split off, some of that general fund money, we shouldn't have to pay for that because we're going to be paying you for that, what we already paid the general fund. I mean, and that's the logical.
Yeah.
Like a question that we all share, but you know, I think from. Because if it's not that, sir, it's a tax, is what it is. Well, it's not a tax because it's a dedicated fee for a service that is only for stormwater management purposes. So it can't be used for anything else other than just for that, similar to.
At least it's a tax that's dedicated to stormwater.
But that's why they call it a fee, you know, a general, a tax is basically for general purposes, right? Any government services.
So that's an answer to the question. So you guys are not going to be receiving your budget from the property tax anymore.
The intent is to become self-sufficient, you know, but again, it's something that we have to kind of, we look at all these different um options. And what we're trying to see is where is that sort of middle ground, what uh, you know, the public would accept? So we want to make sure it's affordable, but we also want to be able to provide the services, right? So that's that balance, but, you know, so. Would it still, maybe if there's options that we're looking at basing it over time? There is also options that we're looking where it's still being supplemented by the general funds and by the highway fund because we're not able to provide the full program. Right upfront, right? So keeping the fee at a lower rate, but yet wrapping it up over time in order to be able to get to the point where it's self-sufficient. All right, Francie?
I move on to you.
Hi, um, there was a question posed in the chat, but I kind of want to change the question. Um, is this statewide being proposed or is this still only sitting county of Honolulu, Oahu?
Just for Oahu, for the city and county.
Okay, and then Ms. Hines is responding to Tara in the chat. Can you just brief everybody what you guys are discussing in the chat here?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Uh, the fee would apply, there was a question, a good question about, is this just for the IA neighborhood area? The fee would apply island-wide and it would apply to all properties, including non-taxable properties, including the Department of Defense and their impervious area. Um, so that is new revenue that would come in. Um, the other great question was about visiting the neighborhood boards. Um, we have, over the course of the last couple of years, been to all the neighborhood boards and are continuing to schedule new presentations.
I think you guys attended about three quarters ago, I think, so I'm like.
Yeah, two thousand and one, yeah.
I think I asked the same question.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, yeah. So we went to all the neighborhood boards twice actually.
Right.
But since that time, because of, of course, earlier was COVID and then there were pressures because of inflation and other timing issues, that's why we kind of had it put on the side.
Any other questions, board members?
Based on their form of settlement, like the food bank that makes a million dollars, so I like. Let's see if you guys have, now it's going to be another fifty thousand dollars to your budget for them to cover this, right? So that's kind of, that has to be like, kind of rethought in a way.
Yeah, but it's, it's would be based on their property, you know, the.
But I think it's mostly based on the revenue.
Well, that's for the hardship program. So like if they qualify because of that point five percent of their total revenue. Then they could qualify for a hardship program, which would reduce. Randy? Randall?
Oh, I saw it, sorry, it's wrong. Yeah, can you explain to me the logic behind assessing the property owner based on impervious area? How is that going to be determined? That doesn't necessarily, the concrete on a parcel may not necessarily be permitted and will not show up in county records. Uh, secondly, what is just because you have a house and you're going to be taxed based on a square footage of the house? And that's making an assumption that the water from the flows onto the house goes automatically into the storm drain versus into the ground. I mean, what's the logic between and how you're going to figure out the impervious area for every single parcel in the county of Honolulu?
Thanks, Russell. Thank you. Question? That's an excellent question. So the way we do this is because we use some available information, both from NOAA, where they have high-resolutions spectral imagery. Uh, aerial imagery that looks at the whole entire island and it breaks it down by all the properties. And what it does is it picks up all that hard surfaces. So it can differentiate between what is considered like landscaping versus hardscape. And what we're doing is we're overlaying it with the property boundary lines so that we can break it up by each property, looking at the total amount of that impervious area. And then from there, calculating for each of those properties based on that, again, that overlay with the property boundaries. And then from that. Uh, we would always give the opportunity for somebody to be able to adjust it because, again, it's a snapshot in time of when we're collecting that information. And maybe there were improvements that somebody had done that weren't picked up at the time when the imagery was collected. So that's where that would always have that opportunity for somebody to appeal that and then make the necessary adjustments. And that's why we talk about that. Time period from when they actually do get the fee behind all of that, that has to have that billing and testing and being able to verify what each property does have. Sorry, what was the second question again? Um, I know you had a second part of that. Well, you mentioned about logic behind what each property generates runoff. So, yes, it's not a perfect system, but like we mentioned earlier, is that the courts have upheld that decision because there is that nexus. That the more impervious area that a person were to have on their property, the more runoff that would be generated. In which case that impacts the stormwater system. So that's just.
You can have a property owner who has a small lot, let's say five thousand square feet with a three thousand square foot house. So you're going to assume that they're going to be assessed based on a three thousand square foot being impervious. As compared, and then compare and contrast, you go another property in IA which has some huge parcels now, ten to fifteen thousand square feet. You have a three thousand, uh, three thousand square foot house surrounded by land. So again, how, I mean, so supposedly. So again, how, I mean, so supposedly this infrared thing is gonna be catching the concrete structures on the property. Is that what supposedly is happening?
Um, we actually, Russell, this, this is a technique that's been utilized since for about twenty two years now. Um, that's actually proved very, very accurate. Um, so we do have good data. We've got a lot of papers published on it too. Um. What, what deals with the situations where, for example, your house on the larger lot that's able to capture the runoff? Um, the credits that would be available to reduce a bill by up to sixty percent, which would take a bill for a single family down to about thirteen to fourteen dollars per month. Um, if you can demonstrate that you are managing the first inch of runoff off of your roof and impervious surface. You would be eligible to reduce your bill by up to sixty percent. So folks with that larger land area would really have a lot of opportunities to divert their downspouts, infiltrate that water and reduce their bill.
Okay, uh, any other questions?
Lawrence. This is a bit different as far as the topic, but as far as our sewer fees, I thought I posted something in my email that this voice water people. Have to adjust this consent degree to upgrade their sewer facilities. Our sewer deal is another one also. But is that something everybody on the board is aware of? It's not a small amount, it's gonna be substantial. So, somebody from environmental, I'm not sure if the board wants somebody to attend right now, but I wanna maybe just to go over. Increase sewer.
That would be DWS, right, Francie? For sewer?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, maybe we'll. Can we start reaching out to somebody for that? Okay. All right.
The border water supply is also increasing, right?
Yeah.
You added the passport we need. It's probably more awesome.
Yeah, I know, I know. So. I'm gonna plant grass on top of my roof. How about that?
Green roof is great.
Okay.
And actually qualify.
All right, perfect. Okay, uh, any other questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, one more. This is it. We gotta move on. We're not gonna finish tonight. All right.
Yeah, so this first time, this planning, well, one, where is the studies that you've been doing? Has it been in Hawaii or on? And because also, do you know the weather patterns here in Hawaii? Like, you know, going off of versus saying. What the area, the land, the incline, you know, windward side, geward side, you know, all of that. One, two, uh, I only found out about neighborhood boards. Uh, after your second presentation apparently to have a beach, so I think one is coming up. And then three, now that I know it's for all of Oahu and how you guys are going about it. Uh, I think we need to see like the timeline and because you need to know that not everybody pays attention or even knows about neighborhood board meetings, knows about these processes. And by the deadlines that, oh, there's a community meeting and or they may be working or they may not be able to attend. So we need to, I, I would like to know those three answers, please.
Okay.
You're muted.
Maybe maybe for that one, I think, yeah.
Yeah, or go ahead, Randall.
Hold on, I'm playing for the.
Um, in terms of, of studies, we've, there, there has already been. Um, a complete analysis of the impervious cover on Oahu done with imagery flown by. Um, NOAA, the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration over the islands. Um, the sensing technique is the same globally. Um, in terms of weather patterns, that's not really a controlling, that doesn't determine bills. Um, there are.
I live in, at a beach, it's dry and it rarely rains this side.
Right, good question. Um, so stormwater fees would not be adjusted based on rainfall. Um, fundamentally, everybody on the island is in some ways using a public system with roads and. Um. You know, the, the, the receiving water is the same for everyone. Um, trying to differentiate based on rainfall patterns, which of course, um, it's generally dry in Eva until it's not, right? With storms. Um, generally, the effort involved in that, given that we really can't control rainfall. Doesn't lend itself to an equitable or predictable system. Um. So, and the studies that are available, we did provide the, uh, in the chat, there's a link, you can see all of the studies and technical analysis that have been done to date. And all the presentations and schedule are available on the website.
So that was question one. There are two other questions.
Um, okay, my, my understanding was the first question was regarding whether studies have been done on Oahu. Um, yes, the, the impervious cover analysis was done for Oahu.
And I think that last question was.
Second question.
Yeah, so the timing wise, that's something again.
The milestones, but number two is really important too as well, you know, yeah, to visit all neighborhood boards again, because. They didn't know about.
Again, yes, that is visiting all the neighborhood boards. We do not have, we, we have to hear back from the neighborhood boards when they're willing to schedule. There has been contact made with all of them, um, but the neighborhood boards control what dates we present, not the Department of Facility Maintenance. So we'll be hearing back from those neighborhood boards. Um, it's up to them when they choose to have the presentations.
So where can the community come forward and, you know, give their comments? Because like I mentioned, not everybody goes to meetings and or. I actually was working and I, until I heard, wait, you know, it's gonna be for all Oahu, wait, you know, so it's nine twenty one.
Ma'am, ma'am, hold on, timeout here for a second. Can I ask you where you're from? You're from Amic, correct?
Yes, I'm following the water, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend that you reach out to your EVA neighborhood board and ask them to. Have these individuals come, do a presentation and do that kinda. Uh. Yeah, we may have those tasks or those, uh, those activities.
Yeah, but community, where, where you're at too, like, how are they gonna find out and be able to comment if they don't go to these meetings?
By me, by me. By me. Because they will reach out to me and I will schedule them just like I did tonight and they will present a presentation and they will give that, those, that information during that presentation.
Okay.
That was on our website. There is a way to, um, send, you know, if you wanna send any information, we have a, a contact us.
Can you post that in the chat, please? Uh, so that, uh, this.
It's posted in the chat.
Great, thank you. Okay, all right, we're gonna move on because we still got board business. I, we're not gonna get to the collective officials tonight, I think. Um, okay, thank you guys for your input, appreciate it and, um, we look forward to, you know, um, is it possible, hold on, hold on. Hold on, uh, is it possible for you to come back again in like six months? I don't know, it's scary. Yeah, would it be possible for you to come back in six months and, or whenever there's like major, major activity?
Come back again.
Okay, yeah, okay. All right, perfect. Thank you. Okay. All right, University of Hawaii Red Hill Richardson Presentation, Tara. Thank you for being patient.
Thank you for having me.
All right, we got literally thirty seven minutes.
I will not take all.
Okay.
Um, so hello, my name is Tara Sutton and I'm here to make an important announcement. On behalf of UH Manoa Office of Strategic Health Initiatives. Focusing on health impacts resulting from the twenty twenty one water crisis. Spare time, I'm gonna just read so I don't.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead and next slide. The affected community has long sought help with healthcare access and understanding the full impacts of the Red Hill water contamination on our lives. This call for help has been supported at the federal and state levels when the CDC, ATSDR, Hawaii Department of Health and even Hawaii's congressional delegation. Called for an independent health registry to be established. This summer on June twentieth, it was announced that UH received an award to, uh. Establish the Red Hill Registry, supported by multi-year grant from the National Center for Disaster Medicine and Public Health or NCDMPA. At the Uniformed Services Universities of Health Sciences or Usus. Some of you may remember back in July when I was here or online, um, and attended this board's last meeting and shared a very brief statement about the registry to help spread awareness. But today I wanna be able to share a little more and make myself available to answer questions from, uh, you on the board or anybody in the community present or online. Next slide, yes, this one. Um, we are in the midst of our first year. This is our planning year with formal registry enrollment expected by fall twenty twenty five. You can see our three key focus areas. Uh, we're establishing the registry's foundation, governance office setup, IT infrastructure, hip of compliant website for secure data management. We're also, um, listening, uh, hosting listening sessions with impacted Navy waterline users, both military and civilian, as well as healthcare professionals. And other community leaders and we're setting up, uh, community oversight workshops, which I'll talk about a little bit more in a minute. Finally, we're drafting an assessment on the feasibility of conducting an epidemiological study, which was required by Congress and then twenty twenty four NDAA. So let's begin with infrastructure, next slide. All right, so here's a photo of our team. Um, they're tiny, but you may recognize some of the faces. We have people across UH, we have scientists, doctors, data security experts leading the Red Hill Registry project. Um, our group is growing steadily as job opportunities get posted. I'll show you towards the end of this presentation how you can stay informed about positions as they become available. I think it would be amazing to have people on the registry who are personally familiar with the Red Hill incident. Um, we can talk about that in a second. The next slide shows our organizational chart. Um, I don't know if you'll be able to read it, but our, uh, chart shows the OSHI leadership or Office of Strategic Health Initiatives towards the top. Guided by community oversight working groups, community engagement is key and our participant work group, as you can see at the bottom, spans across all of our team. Um, and will work closely with partners across the UH system. Next. Community engagement is my main focus. As the Director of Community Outreach, I'll be hosting listening sessions with impacted water users, professionals and leaders, as well as setting up community oversight workshops. So that we ensure the, uh, registry is truly co-created with the community itself. Uh, and the next page, um. You can use this QR code on the slide to visit our, our website, which is redhillregistry.org. You'll be able to subscribe for email updates as we move forward with our efforts. I promised earlier that I would show you how to stay informed about positions as they become available. Uh, we recently added the employment button at the top in the right, so when you click that, as positions become available, you'll be able to see them there. Um, because we are spanning across the UH system and partnering with UHP. Job postings can be kind of scattered and difficult to find, so now we have a, a spot where you can find regardless who's hiring, where to look for it. Um. Now, I said it would be amazing to have people on the registry team who have personal experience with the issue. I myself have lived on the Navy waterline for the past five years. My whole family was impacted by the water contamination and helping my community get help with what we've experienced has been my priority for the last two years. I believe there are more incredible people in the, uh, community who would love a chance to be a part of healing for all of our families in a meaningful way. We're hiring physicians at all levels of experience and education, so please watch that website so that you can, um, be informed if you know anybody looking for positions. And finally, I wanna say thank you on behalf of the Red Hill Registry. I acknowledge that the community and the people of Hawaii who recognized our problem and fought for answers. Will be able to take questions from anybody here or online. If, um, anybody wants to email me questions or, um, concerns, you can use my email address on. On the bottom, it's T Sutton for Tara Sutton at redhillregistry.org. Emailing me doesn't sign you up for email subscriptions, though. You have to do that on the website. End.
Thank you. The brevity of that. Um, so in a nutshell, what are you doing? Like, like, are you putting, are you putting, uh, uh, people in contact with healthcare professionals, I noticed that? And then like others to make sure that they get the proper healthcare or diagnosis or what, what are you, what is?
Okay, so I think the easiest way for me to summarize it is, you know, ever since the spill took place, we've heard we don't know the long term impacts of exposure to jet fuel. We're trying to eliminate that statement.
Okay.
So what we need, we need to do is have people enrolling in the registry who were on the waterline during the twenty twenty one fuel spill will establish with the community, whether that's the narrow window of inclusion for the registry. Or if we're gonna be broadening it out depending on what the community wants.
Okay.
Um, but then we'll be able to track the health outcomes. So as you know, if, let's just say, like, the scary word cancer. That's not gonna show up tomorrow if I drink jet fuel today, but we don't know if it's gonna show up in ten years, so we need to be monitoring for that long.
Right.
Now, there are questions about access to healthcare because the community that was exposed includes civilians, active duty retirees, reservice guards. They all have different types of access to the, um, to, to healthcare. And, you know, even the Red Hill Clinic was set up, but like a year after the exposure and then it took a little bit longer for it to be opened up to civilian, et cetera. So one of the things that we wanna be able to do is utilize, um, existing registry data, not, oh, just sorry. Let me see my words. Utilize existing, um, reference software as well as maybe AI. Because our population is going to be global and it's gonna span birth to great grandparents. And so we can't just rely on, you know, like, we've been in partnership with the Flint Registry to talk about how they got established and, but they're.
This is Flint, Michigan, right?
Correct, after their.
After the lead, right?
Yeah, so we've been talking with them about like, how do you get people connected and find resources that they need? What, what kind of information do you need to provide for them? We're wanting to be able to do those same types of services, but on a global scale and with a really wide range of. Access to healthcare because of our population. Um, and also creating educational materials so that people can go to their doctor and say, this, I drank this. What do I do now? You know, um, go to their next, uh, duty station and say, hey, command. This happened at my last one and the family has needs, things like that.
Right, okay, great. Uh, board members, any questions?
Funding coming from and how far, how many years is covered so far?
Currently, we are funded for the first five years. The feasibility assessment that I, um, notated in the conversation was, um. What that was going to do is tell Congress, yes, it's feasible to conduct a epidemiological health study, which would be based off of a registry because you need data to do a study, correct? So the registry would be the data collection source. Um, the registry, getting it going for the first five years is what's already, um, in progress. The feasibility assessment that we're submitting to Congress will tell them it's necessary and feasible to continue, so that's hopefully gonna bring the rest in so that we can continue long term. No registry exists only five years. Um, and then the funding, it does, uh, like, just to jump to the case, as an impacted community member, everybody wants to know, is this maybe money, right? Um, so it, the military is required to pay for the cleanup and the remediation efforts, right? That was close. So it does come from the military funding, however, it doesn't come directly to us from the military, so they are not our funders. If you, you know what I mean, like, um, the money has come to us through the National Center for Disaster Medicine and Public Health. Which is at Usus and so it's. Because it's been channeled that way, we're able to report back to something other than the military. So any kind of data sharing or communication, it's not going to happen where there's any obligation or, um. Relationship where we have to give them that back. They'll get the same kind of feedback and information as anybody else in general.
Any other board members?
Lawrence. UH made some water studies, analysis of the regular spill. Their, their documentation as far as their testing, telling that there was a high level of contaminants. But the fence that they, that got squashed, it went away. But is that possible, something that may happen because we are the funded by the federal government side?
Part of our team works at the Water Research, Research, Resource Center. Um, so we do have that, those kinds of scientists on our team. Um, however, the registry is independently just the registry. Uh, the scientists at UH will continue to do work and doing testing, but they'll contribute knowledge to the registry as far as, um, things that are applicable, like. Um, what kind of chemicals are involved? What are the potential exposure routes, uh, you know, inhalation, air, uh, dermal? Drinking, things like that. So the scientists will help us in that way, but they, that's not the same kind of funding.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, ma'am. And you know what, I, I'm just gonna make this all quick. At least you're providing solutions, right, on point of things, so I appreciate that.
While I drank the water, I lost some. So I have some, like, really pretty sticky notes and pens. If, um, if you guys want them, I'll put them on the table over here and you can have them.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Yes. Yes.
Alright, uh, moving on, um, so we got this, the, oh, so the HONU. Um, I have talked to the Director of this uh program and eventually we'll probably have them come back to the board to do a presentation on their, what they do. But in the case of Halawa Park, I have been told absolutely one hundred percent, no question about it, that there will not be a HONU effort at Halawa Park. So the residents that live around Halawa Park, at this time, you have no concerns about the HONU program being implemented at HONU Farah at Halawa Park. Clear? Okay. Moving on.
When you said at this time, what, what kind of thing were you talking about? Because I think they broke.
No, they told us they have no future plans.
No.
No future plans for Halawa Park. Okay. Uh, and you know what, in all honesty, because I don't think they want to do that fight with. Okay, so, okay, so keep, keep beating that drum if it ever comes up again. Alright, okay, community input on the Waho community or correction facility or receiver location. This is O'Sharr, um, and we, we, we talked a lot about O triple C today. Um, so can we try and make this brief as possible?
Yeah, we'll, we'll try, um. Uh, Word and Shell, I think, was going to do a little bit of a lead-in for us to help to kind of link our work um relative to AHL's work.
I'm going to keep it really short. Thank you, sir. So uh, just to let everyone know, this uh Kathy worked for UHCDC, right? They've been working for us as the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation to do outreach around the new Alahu jail. And not only has Kathy been doing that, but she's also been getting a lot of input from the local communities all over the island uh about not only uh Alahu community corrections, but corrections in a whole and the direction that we need to go to become more of a, a rehabilitative model. So what she's going to present today, some of it is very big picture. A lot of it affects what we're talking about when we're building O triple C, but some of it will have effect well beyond just O triple C stuff. So you're going to see some things that will probably be department-aligned. So don't confuse it with just things, if she mentions Halawa Prison, that's not us. Uh, you know, doesn't mean we're not all the same system and we're not going to work together, but don't get it locked in your head that this is all just site-specific to O triple C. And I'm going to turn it over to you now, Kathy, I'll be glad to answer questions.
Okay, great, yeah, no, I'll let the team share a screen if they can do that and get started, thank you. Yep, that works, go for it.
Okay, I might have to firmly hold you guys for ten minutes, so.
Yeah, why don't you guys just keep rolling?
Yeah, we get on.
Okay, so just, oh, just to reiterate our work, DCR aims to engage the community to envision a facility to replace O triple C in a community-based continued care. These are our list of goals, which include engaging diverse stakeholders, research and sort of justice models, consult with peer facilities, share knowledge and develop a concept design, as well as draft the guideline document that informs the development, the department as they develop a request for proposal for this new facility. As we mentioned previously, our work is separate from AHL's professional planning and RFP development, which is shown in the block. UHCDC's research engagement and design studies will complement this, informing DCR as they cooperate with AHL on RFP in yellow. UHCDC is not responsible for developing or responding to the RFP for this new jail and our focus is reflecting on community perspectives through our research and engagement, creating a community vision and not professional plans and designs. You'll see our project schedule is shown in more detail here. We are about to host our last community of practice meeting this week and we'll be submitting our full final report to DCR this fall.
We have gathered input on the entire spectrum of care, spanning prevention, diversion, corrections and reentry facilities to identify gaps in our system of care that prevent individuals from receiving the support they need to avoid future reoffense and recidivism. Corrections in the O triple C jail are just one small part of this. We understand that we need to invest in prevention, diversion and reentry facilities alongside the new facility and will be advocating for those facilities as part of our findings. Today, however, we are focusing on visioning what DCR is calling a new Oahu jail.
As many of you know, the new Oahu jail will be built where the current animal quarantine station is in Halawa as chosen by former Governor Iggy in twenty eighteen. Much of our work is informed by reports and studies that predict our project, some shown here.
In past meetings, individuals highlighted the importance of addressing trauma experienced by staff and incarcerated individuals. Trauma is defined as the results from a series of circumstances that experienced by an individual is physical or emotionally harmful with effects on an individual's functioning and physical, social, emotional and spiritual well-being. So this brings us to a trauma-informed design, which is based on a strength-based framework grounded in understanding and responding to the impact of trauma. The four core principles of this are safety, choice, connection and comfort. Stakeholders also emphasize that cultural trauma must be uh considered and a work. Cultural trauma, which is passed down through generations, occur when a group is experiencing ongoing oppression in what E, the loss of native blind identity after post-Western contact led to historical trauma and healing requires recognizing cultural violations, cultural sensitive education and holistic well-being.
We've also been sharing out case studies throughout our process. The case studies span from prevention, diversion, corrections and reentry, including cultural centers, crisis intervention programs and health and treatment centers. We share out these, uh, we share these out and will continue to advocate for a continuum of care facilities to reduce incarceration. Now we will briefly view our community engaged research process. So we visited various health centers and providers, reentry and transitional housing facilities and others where we held hands-on activities. We also spoke to currently and previously incarcerated individuals who provided thoughtful insights. We've hosted three breaking cycle symposium events and participated in job fairs and special event days, which allowed us to share knowledge and gather feedback. As you all know, we also held a workshop at IA Elementary School and attended four IA Neighborhood Board and five IA Community Association meetings to keep with the IA Halawa community informed of our process. Most recently, we shared three conceptual proof of concept design approaches we created at our second community of practice meeting. We are presenting the same information today with small updates.
The insights that were shared informed the conceptualization of our design framework. This mission was created from the conversations that we have had thus far. Currently, it states to support community equity, health, safety and well-being by providing individuals in custody with rehabilitation-focused and culturally competent assessments, programs, environments, relationships and personnel that address core needs and prevent future harm. And based on our conversations, we created nine design principles to guide the design process. These include safety, security, trauma-informed care, well-being, strengths-based, connections and relationships, opportunities, empowerment and progression, I Na-based culture and identity, education and respect, dignity and normalization.
Regarding program adjacency, people noted importance of separating sentence and pre-trial population along with implementing community-facing and community-partner components and cultural and spiritual programs at the center of the facility. For site organization, people liked the idea of a central green space, smaller landscape areas and smaller living units for the sentence population and transitional housing. They also suggested step-up housing, a campus approach and enclosed courtyards for more access to nature.
This is a conceptual example of a module based on research and feedback for men who were previously incarcerated from Moka, Habitat and Ha'ho'ko. This module includes glazing to allow natural light to enter the room, wall murals, various furniture configurations, a multi-purpose room, treatment room, and access to green space and a recreation area. People also stressed the need for dedicated staff spaces as a lounge, dining area, wellness courtyard, walking path, training room slash counseling room and a gym for their well-being. Additionally, listening to everyone from our community engagement events, we organize other recommended uh well-being related design components into a well-being toolkit.
And based on all this feedback, we have three preliminary proof of concept studies to present today. Again, these are still in progress and we want to remind you that we are not the professional design team. Our designs represent community visions and aspirations. The schemes understand the difference between prison and jail facilities and represent the alternative approaches to short-term facilities that were brought up during our engagement process. And this diagram is a simplified representation of the new program based on the feedback we received from the community. The primary components are admitted intake, substance abuse and detox space, mental health, medical, program and education spaces, recreation space, reception housing, pre-trial housing, sentenced housing, transition housing and facility and staff support spaces. In our UHCDC schemes, based on community feedback, we propose a smaller, secure transition center for the men reentering society compared to DCR's earlier plans. The community expressed a preference for more reentry beds within the community, which could be integrated into an updated La Makua facility in Kalihii. We also stress the need to link the new jail with diversion on the left and reentry programs on the right here, including cultural and faith-based reentry programs. Step-down reentry facilities from residential treatment like Hinamaka to sober housing like Makana Okeakuwa are also essential for supporting addiction recovery and smoother transitions. We are advocating for these alongside the new O triple C.
Our talks with Auntie K. How and Uncle Bruce pointed us in the direction of Queen Emma, known as Wahine Olili Ohalawa, who governed with benevolence and ensured the people had all the resources they needed. In eighteen fifty-nine, Queen Emma and King Kamehameha the fourth founded the Queen's Hospital to address the healthcare needs of the people of Wai'i. Her commitment to healing offers a resonant conceptual foundation for the new facility. A rare variety of taro, the Kai Koi Taro was significant to the Eva Moku, which grew in Halawa Valley. The name challenges the forceful Kaia Eva as it sent out more shoots and other kalo and you will see how this shape your design for our well-being framework. We created a Kai Koi framework as a visual aid to contextualize the community's input. It starts at the root of the kalo and the nutrients go into the ground first to establish a new model based on community input, we need communication, new policies, resources, mindset shifts and rehabilitation, we focus programs, people and environments. With these in place, individuals can grow, make friends with their family, staff, victims, the community, the I Na and the Kua, ultimately leading to a transformed life.
This is a closer look at the proposed site.
And we are presenting three proof of concept approaches that are based on public feedback. The three public input approaches are a step-up campus approach, a health center approach and a community justice hub approach. All three have rehabilitation at, as reintegration as a goal and please note that these are site diagrams and they do not represent site designs yet. So the first public input approach is a step-up campus. Key features include linear movement to reflect progression, starting with substance abuse, medical detox, buildings around open space for I Na-based activities and a transitional center that can be repurposed for therapeutic or transitional non-correctional housing.
The second public input approach is the triage complex and this key features include a compact layout with programs and a central courtyard, a radio process showing progression for individuals and a medical substance abuse detox facility near the front, which could later become a behavioral care center and a smaller transition center that links to off-site media-based transitional housing.
The third public input approach is a community justice hub and key features included justice hub offering community services such as health, housing, family support, jobs, education, culture and courthouse spaces, along with using part of the proposed animal quarantine parcel for a secure transition center.
And in our last meeting, it seemed like people didn't quite understand how programs were integrated into our public input approaches. Therefore, we created two visual stories based on the feedback we received from the community. The first graphic narrative describes the experience that an individual would go through entering the new facility.
So in the first scene, the officer assesses that the individual poses a public safety threat or can be redirected to the crisis center. If custody is needed, the individual is taken to the new facility and processed through intake. In the second scene, the individual discusses next steps with a staff member. The staff conducts a brusque and needs assessment and creates a personalized plan addressing core needs like detox, substance abuse treatment, mental health services and supports in areas such as culture, education, employment, housing and family. In the third scene, the individual is placed in a living unit that best addresses his core needs. In pre-trial housing, people anonymously wanted individuals separated by offense or risk factors. Those with lived experience also stress separating people by gain involvement and their desire to change. In the fourth scene, it depicts areas dedicated to cultural and spiritual practices such as I Na-based work, which includes cultivating taro, growing native medicinal plants and spaces for pule or prayer and Makuhiki, which is a native Hawaiian celebration that is observed in other Hawaii and Arizona facilities.
Community members and people with lived experience shared with us that education is a vital component. So we are showing classroom spaces along with online courses that are accessible, even if the staff are unavailable or in the event of a lockdown. In addition, there are spaces for arts, faith-based programs and music where individuals can express their different skills and talents. There are engagement, people advocated for living spaces that allow for people to feel safe and treat people with dignity. This includes a window with views and separate toilet areas. And people also advocated for direct areas for, uh, direct access from each module to recreation and nature. This is what a record could look like in sentence housing.
Family was especially important to those we spoke with, with lived experience as well as a broader public. Here we show visitation areas that are safe and secure and comfortable in indoor and outdoor environments where individuals can meet their loved ones and maintain or repair a family relationship. We also heard the need for secure transition centers where individuals are supported while transitioning back to the community. And in this specific narrative, the individual leaves the facility during the day to work and when he returns, he shares li- life responsibilities with other men like cooking and cleaning. Altogether, they adjust to a normalized daily routine. Lastly, our character's time in the facility comes to an end. The transition center sets him up with his documents, a job and housing. Most importantly, he leaves with a warm handoff to his family and with the support of the mentors and peers that he was connected with while in the facility. They will continue to support him in the community.
We also heard the call to invest in staff to change the culture of corrections. The second graphic narrative outlines the journey of a newly recruited ACO officer. The narrative begins with ACO training and with many individuals we spoke to emphasize the importance of trauma-informed training as a mandatory part of the correctional academy curricula. The ACO enters certificate and graduates from the academy. The second scene highlights a dynamic security model, model in which a corrections officer is walking around and actively interacting with the residents. This model has proven to decrease the number of incidents and increase safety and communication.
The next page highlights the amenities for the ACO such as wellness court, a gym, walking paths, a dining area and therapy room to speak to a counselor to adjust the high rate of trauma and anxiety, depression and suicide and divorce across correctional staff. The story ends with the ACO shopping in a grocery store where he runs into one of the residents he took care of in the past. Remember that ninety-five percent of the people in jail will return to our community. The resident thanks him for helping him during his time at the facility.
And as for upcoming events on our end, we'll be hosting our third in-person community of practice meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, September eleven from eleven thirty AM to one thirty PM at the State of Mind Tower. If you're interested, please let us know and we'll go ahead and share the RSVP, RSVP link through the comments. Thank you.
Is that the, any of the president?
It sure is, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, board members, any questions? Lawrence?
As far as the level of security, did some of that, all of us in?
No, 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 this is a jail and it will have solid walls, it'll have fences, it will have every, it, it, it's a jail. It's not, it's not minimum custody.
There's a transitional facility.
Can I, can I, can I show a board? Can I show a board? It'd be easier to answer, but, so keep in mind that this is still a concept, this is not hardened vast anything, but this is what we're conceiving. And you'll see the area right here. Right here, okay, right there. Alright, you can see the area that we're at. This area that looks like three things, this is the transition area. It is still on the property, still inside of our designated area, okay? It's not something outside of the facility, it's inside of our stuff. Our fence line will run here and around here. Okay, so this is the main jail, right here is the main jail. And keep in mind, it'll look different than this when we actually have plans to build it. This is just where it's at and this will be the transition center.
They mentioned the people in the transitional center, they go outside of the jail to do work and all that.
Well, what, what we're looking at doing, so transition center is kind of a, uh, it's a catch-all name. And the reason it's a catch-all name is because the transition center is going to have people, will have people who come from uh like Halawa, Wa'awa, but they aren't going to be able to be, for whatever reason, released to a work, work process, you know, or a furlough thing. They may stay there a while, until we get them ready to go to furlough, they'll stay there, then we move them to La Makua. La Makua's not closing. Okay, La Makua is staying downtown, La Makua's still there. What also will happen here is when we have people who go out and they have minor uh parole probation violations, but they didn't create, uh, commit a new crime, we now have a place that we can bring them back to because usually those people won't come back for about two weeks. Gives us a chance to work on whatever they did wrong and get some sort of fix to get them back out into the public. That's where it's called a transition center. I'm not going to promise you anything because I don't control that at this point. That's the director's call and I'm not going to stand up here and tell you what the director's going to do or not going to do. What I'm going to tell you is the way we're envisioning it right now, the La Makua will still be the furlough center.
You know, it's a community concern about people leaving and coming back.
Yes, I know, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it is what's going to happen. That's their concern. What we are envisioning right now is that they will come and go, they're still going to, I think the lady over here was more concerned about people at the jail being released because we get a court order says you're going to be released. That was your real concern, right? Yeah, right, um, but what we are envisioning, this isn't going to be necessarily the work center. The work center is, is the furlough station, which is La Makua, which is downtown off of Kuli Street.
As far as that hundred K, you said it takes two thousand dollars per year. Is that hundred K going to be going up or down?
Say that again, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Uh, well, you, you know, is it going to go up or down? Everything goes up. I mean, honestly, this is what I'm going to tell you, everything goes up. It's, it costs, it cost eighty thousand to do it twenty years ago. As we go forward, of course, it's going to cost more money because inflation makes everything cost more. Is it going to be more cost-intensive, meaning more, you know, that we have to spend more per person because we're giving them more things? Not necessarily. Um, what we're looking at in this design is actually trying to create, right now, we have a hundred positions that are open in O triple C. Um, and those of you who are to receive, it's, it's hard to run it with what we got. We have been a hundred positions down for over a year because I've been there for over a year and we have never had that hundred positions filled, we try all the time. What we're trying to do in the design is to come up with more effective ways. What we're trying to do in the design is to come up with more effective ways, more efficient ways to watch inmates. And, and the only way I can really explain it, maybe Chairman Wood could talk to it because he's actually walked through the place. It's a nightmare to try to supervise inmates with all the nicks and crannies and stuff that we've got there. This will give us a fresh design where we won't have to have as many officers to keep the public as safe or even safer than they are right now.
Right, so I think that adage that, you know, show me, don't tell me, right? Uh, was key in this case because as soon as I walked into some of those facilities and I think Danny and May can actually attest to this as well, and Francie, you could immediately tell where blind spots were.
Oh, yeah.
You could immediately tell where the guards might be put in a dangerous situation because you just can't see that location unless they actually walk to a certain location in the, in the complex. Um, it also puts inmates in, in danger too, because there's certain areas that the guards just can't see. So inmates can do whatever they want in those, in those locations unless a guard physically goes to another location outside of their regular duty location to look in that space. It's just not conducive to, it, it requires more manpower to properly supervise that location because it's old, it's outdated. And if a new locate, a new facility could be created to where it could remove those blind spots, it could remove those deficiencies, you would use less people to be able to monitor the same amount of people in a given space.
So as far as money spent, but is it more worthwhile to do the intervention when they get caught with a lot of police officers? A lot, a lot, but some that I spoke to, they catch people, it's a catch and release, the next day they're out again. Is it better to do the intervention then and have them third times that they're not catching the missing and they actually do some kind of, um?
I'm, I'm gonna fudge a little on my answer to that because what I want you to understand is that I run the jail. What you're talking about takes legislation to change the way we do arrestsees and how we handle it. So understand I have absolutely no control over this. It's not like I can make this, this is something, I think that Kathy, if she was still, I don't know, Kathy, you're on. Her, her committee would tell you, yeah, absolutely, intervening beforehand is great if we can do it. We have to have law changes to make that happen. Right now, we don't have those law changes. So when we go to, to build a new facility, this is where we're gonna have to be very flexible in the design that we make. Because here's the thing, we don't know what the legislature is gonna hand out to us next year, ten years, twenty years, fifty years from now. And we have to design a facility that can meet all of those needs and be flexible in how it's designed. And that means that we have to have spaces that we can use creatively. You know, there may be a time, hey, wouldn't it be great if, uh, Oahu only had six hundred people in their jail? And we could mothball part of that or turn it into a treatment center or do it some, something else with that space, right? There's something we can do there, but we don't know what that's gonna look like. And we cannot know because a lot of that is gonna be, be based on the legislature and the laws. The courts define who come to jail. Not, I, I, I don't have any control over that. Trust me, if I had that much control, right now I'm sitting with eleven hundred and twenty guys, one hundred and fifteen guys sitting in a jail that was built for nine hundred people. I don't have beds for all. You know, if I could, if I could fix that, I would, but I can't. So what I have to do is I have to have flexible space where I could make, make, make space for those people. And if we need to, you know, if we get to the point where we do the reduction in crime and we have a reduction in the number of people who come to jail for whatever reasons, that means we're winning, right? That means, that means that's what we really want in corrections is we wanna reduce the number of people who keep coming back. That would be a great win for me. I would be fine with mothballing off or, or using that building for some other space or, you know, uh, doing what we need to do. But that's not where we're at. The reality is we have to work it out because if we continue to plan on what might be and what maybe will happen down the line, we'll never get anywhere and the cost goes up on this project every year.
Just like skating. Okay, we got literally a minute now. Um, so I appreciate you guys providing the brief. Um, is it okay if I add to the agenda for next month as well?
I'm gonna.
Because I don't think we're finished with this conversation.
No, I, I, I know. I'd love to say that.
And we have questions, community has a lot of questions. Um, there's a lot of things I want to talk about based on our visit because honestly, board members, you should have went, okay? Because I think a lot of your questions would have been answered, just go. Um, it was, it was, it was I O B.
And terribly, they're, they're more than happy.
I know, I know.
If you wanna set up another one, just let me know and we can get some work done.
So, uh, I would highly recommend if the warden wants to set up another one, then you go, okay? Uh, because I'm gonna, after this meeting, I'm literally sending out an email to all the chairs and vice chairs offering the same, the warden has offered to give them all tours as well too. So I'm gonna put that, I'm gonna put that out to all the chairs and, and vice chairs on Oahu saying, hey, take advantage of this because I think it's gonna be an educational experience for you. Um, yeah, uh, it was just, it, it, it. Okay, with that, um, I'm, so how do we do this since we didn't get through our, in nearly like half our schedule? Uh, most of the time, all that items will be postponed on the next agenda pending the scheduled conflict if there may be. Okay, all right, so, and we have to vote on that? No, we're just, we're out of time, so you can go to announcements, you can read the next meeting so everyone knows. All right, all right, so we're out of time. So board of water supply next month? Okay, because we have a lot of questions for me too. All right, um, and then the other two items, um, I, I'll do all that offline. Um, and then approval or regular meeting minutes? Do we have to do that today or? No rush, okay, so that we'll adjourn today. We'll put that on the meeting, um, business, board business next month. Sorry that we couldn't get to residents and community concerns. I think we got enough of them already today. And elected officials, I'm sorry that you guys were here and I'm sorry we couldn't get to you as well. Okay, um, reports, Claire, sorry, um, I'm apologizing for sitting here. Uh, gonna get to you and committees. Um, I don't think there's anything to report outside of what we've already talked about. So moving on to announcements, the next meeting will be October eighth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, just as a heads up, I will not be, there will not be a repeat of this month uh, in terms of just wild and carefree, uh, going back and forth. I think it was beneficial to air out some of the things that we needed to air out today, but next month, that will not happen. Okay, so, uh, so, um, October eighth, ten P M, Tuesday, here, I A Library. As you can see with the rebroadcast in the YouTube archive, I am sure Mr. Wang is gonna be posting that. Um, uh, with that, the meetings are adjourned. Thank you.